At this time, we'll call the September Ward of Commissioners meeting to order. And at this time, we'll stand for the invocation by Commissioner Langley and the pledge by Commissioner Walker.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we are grateful and thankful for the opportunity to assemble together to do the business of your people. Father, we ask for divine inspiration, Father God, that everything that we say and do will be pleasing in thy sight, and we will do what is best for your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Please face the flag. Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, when a nation under God, indivisible, delivered to its justice for all.
I'll ask that if you have your cellphone, smartphone, flip phone, whichever one it is, if you will put it in the vibrate or either cut it off. The first item is the Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement. Any commissioner have a disclosure? Hearing none, we'll move to item number D, the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, we need to add Police Committee report. It's going to be about one sentence long.
I always think it was already on here.
Was it already on there? Maybe a quarter of a minute.
I thought it.
Doesn't matter. It can go toward the end.
Okay. Well, you've got six items, so you can roll it into one of those.
Okay.
All right. Did we get a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Public comments, we didn't have any one sign up for that. And I don't see any of our legislators with us tonight. Then to item number G, items for consent. Is there any of these that you want to pull out for further discussion?
I'd like to pull prior year purchase orders. And on page 22, the purchase order for $30,000. And on page 11, well, wait a minute, oh, number 11, resolution opposing reduction in the number of judges.
Okay, so that's, I've got two and 11. Did I miss one?
Yeah, there's three.
What was the, number five?
Yeah, number five.
Okay. We'll try to, I need it when we get to yours, we'll try to tackle. Looks like you might have to tackle at least two of them. All right. Can I have a, we got a motion, did we get a second?
We didn't, we didn't have a motion.
You made the motion?
No, I'm second, I thought.
Okay, I thought we had a motion.
No, no.
Didn't? Okay.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Randy, you second? Okay, all those in favor with the change or pulling that number two, five, and number 11, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Five, two. All right, item number H is item for presentation, our Health Department, COVID-19 update. Jim?
Hey, everybody, I hope y'all doing all right. Bless you. This is day 532 of the Beaufort County COVID operations. So sad to say that I'm still up here doing this monkey for y'all. That being said, I want to keep y'all in the loop what's going on. So this is what the North Carolina numbers look like. And you can see that that second spike has almost reached what it was back in the January, December to February timeframe in North Carolina. And then Beaufort County were pretty much mirroring the same kind of numbers. You can see there, the second spike is getting close to what it was in that same timeframe around the change of the new year, same pattern. And later, when I show you testing numbers, positivity rate, you'll also see the same pattern or similar pattern to them. So what does that mean as far as our numbers go? That we have, we're at 5,905 positive cases that we know of since the start of this in Beaufort County. And that's about 4.9% of those people have been hospitalized at any one time. And that's been pretty consistent for the whole year and a half. And we've had 108 deaths. And again, that 1.8% of the known cases passing is pretty consistent from the very beginning. We're following 622 cases right now of active cases in Beaufort County. So my staff is doing contact investigation and contact tracing on as many of these people as we can and as many of the people that want to be, because a lot of people now are probably getting tired of it, so they're tired of hearing from us. And so we try to get what we can from them and make sure that they're, know what they need to know and that they have everything available. A lot of times, what we find that they need is like letters to go back to work or to go back to school and those kind of things. And we're working with all the people that need that kind of information or feedback from us. Right now, I'm sad to say that we have 22 Beaufort County residents that are in the hospital today, is the number that I got. And one of those would be on a ventilator. You also see what I have on this new, something I put on here new is the seven-day average case rate at 51.9. What I've been trying to do is work with different agencies and different companies in the county and, you know, their level of protection based off of what's going on in the county. So I've been using this number to kind of designate when you should up your protective measures. And so they go on the website and they look at that number to figure out what level they should be looking at for their recommendations. Yeah, I guess I could say that we were at, 2.3 was our low back in June timeframe for that number. So this is how we compare to other counties when you look at the rate per 10,000 people. So we're in the second highest group right now, and that second highest group is between 95 and 131 cases per 10,000, and we're at 96.4. So we're kind of in a high area. A month ago, some of those other areas were in the high area, and it kind of moved and shifted over to us. So we're really hopping with high numbers right now. Along with the number of cases, the number of deaths have gone up. So I had five deaths in August that are COVID-associated, and that's the highest number we've had since February of this year. I have two others that I'm investigating right now, so that number, both those cases I'm investigating were in August, so those two may be added to this five and make it This just goes to show the impact that hospitals have had, these are the whole Viden system right there. So you can see that, again, they had that big spike in the number of admissions into the hospital, and the number of those that are in the ICU has gone up, and then the number of those on a ventilator is now up to, at this point, it was 21 when this report came out, which was a couple of days ago. Actually, it was, it was today, yeah, I got it this morning. So they are also being impacted by these numbers. So as far as testing, you can see that we've increased a lot in testing over the last three weeks, four weeks. And this graph, I did this graph, and then afterwards, I got 606 more test results came in. So on that 30th of September line at the very end, you could add another 600, which brings us to 1,491 tests that we did last week in Beaufort County by us or our partners, which Viden and Agape, Urgent Care Down East, they're all our partners. And that comes out to a 17.0% positivity rate. And so that's where you can see that positivity rate really spikes above like 10, when we're seeing a large spread in our community. So we're definitely at a high number again for that.
A lot of people are using self-test. If they test positive with a self-test, do they get up with you and so you can log that?
If somebody does a self-test, we won't know about it. So that does not count in our numbers at all. Most of those people would end up going to get confirmation through us. So when we have our test line going through, we'll ask them why you're here, and I don't know what the percentage, but they'll say that they did a self-test and it was positive, so they're getting confirmation that way. And I don't really, I can't correlate those numbers because we're not documenting it on our forms.
Are you okay with the accuracy of the self-test?
Well, see, it's based a lot on how accurate people do the test. Since they've never done it, they're reading instructions, there's probably a lot of people that are may or may not be doing it right, so I don't know that number. Generally speaking, though, if it's, you're sick and it's positive, it's probably accurate. And this number, this graph here is to show you how many of those that have been sequenced by Viden has been positive. And over the last three weeks, it's been 100% of everything that's been sequenced. So they may have 1,000 tests, but they'll only pull out randomly every 200 tests or something. I don't know what the numbers they use, and then they'll look at it to see what variant we're talking about. And at this point, they're all Delta variants, so everything we're seeing right now is probably Delta variant. And that's been going on now for about, about two months, probably mostly Delta. So as far as our test sites go, we did change our hours a little bit because we've had so many people coming through, and we're starting to cross into our vaccine times. So what we did was we cut back a little bit on the, we stopped a little bit earlier. Started a little bit earlier, and we're going to stop a little bit earlier, same amount of time. So we had that gap is in there to help us with that. We're also trying to bring in another test site. What we're finding is a lot of agencies and organizations are starting to do mandatory testing for their employees if they haven't been vaccinated, so they may be testing them every week or every two weeks or whatever it is. And so those people coming through us every two weeks is really going to increase our numbers to where we can't handle that. So we're trying to get a test site operational, and we'll hope to have that up within the next two weeks or something like that. It takes a while to get this stuff going, but we're trying to work with a contractor to do that. Reminder that most providers will test you if you come into their clinic sick, and we get a lot of those test results through that system. And again, a reminder that if you need transportation, we have it available through the BAT system. So as far as vaccinations go, you can see that the vaccine demand has really increased over the last three or four weeks, four or five weeks, actually. We're now approaching right around 400 per shot, or per week that are getting vaccinated with either the Moderna or the Pfizer, or, and then a few more are getting vaccinated with the Johnson &amp; Johnson. I'll talk a little bit about booster in a minute. So what that basically indicates, or where we're at right now as far as vaccinations go, we're, we just went over, and this is also before I got the state numbers today. So this is Friday's numbers, but the state, today, we went over 50% of people at least received the first vaccine in our population. And we're at 60% of adults that are vaccinated with at least one dose of vaccine, and 55.2% of adults 18 and older have been fully vaccinated. For children 12 to 17, or young adults 12 to 17, about one-fourth of them have received the first dose at least. During our initial evaluation, our survey, we saw that about 30% of parents wanted their children vaccinated, so we're getting close to that number. And I don't know if that number's probably changed, gone up a little bit over the last couple of weeks. This graph is showing how we compare with our, that 50% number and how we compare to the other counties around us. So we're pretty much at the same level as most of the counties, so it's pretty much statewide. Some of the areas in the middle section, Orange County, Durham County, Wake County, those places have much higher rates. They're up to like 80% at some of those locations vaccinated.
What is the death rate in those areas? I don't know if you've got that.
Those areas?
Yeah.
I don't know, I didn't look it up, so.
Our death rate's hovering around 1.9 to 2%.
That's our whole duration of the.
Yeah, start to finish, end to now.
So I hate to do math in front of everybody, but if you take the five deaths that I'm talking about and divide it by that thousand-something I had earlier, I probably will tell you what the death rate is. We've had 1,241 deaths since June 1st.
I mean, you mean cases?
Cases, I'm sorry. And then, and seven deaths during that timeframe. So that would, that would be a rough estimate on that for you. So what, the cases that we're seeing, the vaccination status on it, and I threw off all my graph numbers here. So 1,241 cases, you can see that about 11% of those cases have been vaccinated. So that tells you that, yes, vaccination, you can still get it if you've been vaccinated. But you can see that 89% of those have been unvaccinated, so it really is a lot more the unvaccinated that are catching this Delta virus. And looking at the next graph, you can see that those numbers fall very similar to what the hospitals see. But this is Viden's numbers for a day that they looked at, and you can see that the big block of people over there, that's 12.7% of those that are in the hospital were unvacc- or, excuse me, vaccinated. In the ICU, 8.8% of them were vaccinated, and 9.5% of them were on the ventilator. So those are good, good numbers to show that the vaccine is working. So then I wanted to look at the attack rate based off of whether you've been vaccinated or not, and if you, so for every 1,000 people that have been in Beaufort County not vaccinated, the attack rate is 39.7. So that's, for every 1,000, almost 40 of them have contracted COVID over, since June timeframe. If you've been partially vaccinated, which was about 2,000-something people, about 6.6% of the 1,000 rate. And then if you've been vaccinated, that's about 4.7. So you can really see visually here how well the vaccine is protecting people from becoming cases that we know about.
Has anybody died, has anybody died yet that hasn't been vaccinated?
There was, there was one, 88-year-old man that passed, who was COVID-positive for the second time, or after the vaccine. So booster shots. So everybody's heard about the booster shots and then about the recommendation for the third dose. So it's, people are still confused. I put out an article for everybody, but it's still confusing, and I can understand why, because they're both a third dose. We're talking about here is we're talking about third dose both times. But the third dose recommendation is really for the immunocompromised. So that third dose recommendation came because the vaccine may not have been effective when somebody received the first two shots. And we're talking about the Moderna and the Pfizer here. So that, in that case, what they did was say, well, let's give them a third one and try to get them to have a reaction. So that's what that third dose is for. Versus the booster, which is a recommendation for the schedule of a vaccine based on following people's antibodies after the vaccine and then watching it wane after a certain amount of time. So it starts to show a decrease after a certain amount of time. And that is when they recommend a booster to get it back up and cranking, and then hopefully I'll provide a longer-term vaccine, immunization, immunological response over time. So that's what a booster is versus a third dose. So the third dose is for the immunocompromised people, most immunocompromised people know they have that because they're being followed by a doctor. If you, if you're diabetic and you're under control, you're probably not one of a candidate for this. So we recommend that you talk to your doctor before you get that third dose recommendation. It has officially been recommended for vaccinations, and we are currently doing that at the Health Department. So just, we ask that you talk to your doctor and then schedule it with us, and we'll give you that third dose based off of that, your attestation that you have immunocompromised condition that needs that third shot. The booster shot, also a third shot, applies to that schedule I was telling you about, and it may be different. So if you think about the Pfizer and the Moderna, the second shot was different for each one. One was a 21-day recommendation, the other one's a 28-day recommendation. So they had a different schedule, which is only a week apart. I don't know what it's going to look like for the booster, the third shot in that series. There was a report a couple of weeks ago that was going to be at eight-month window for that. But I don't know if that's going to be true at this point, because there's been some FDA conversation about Pfizer may be ready to do at eight months, but they don't know if Moderna will be recommended. So no recommendations have been made yet for that booster, which is not, again, different from that third dose. There's no recommendation coming out. That being said, we have kind of started planning for it as though it was going to be at the eight-month window, but I caution everybody to know that it may not be right at that eight months, okay? And we may be changing what we're doing based off of the FDA recommendations that come out. But that being said, I did want to jump ahead a little bit to show you what the planning we're talking about here. So this is a week breakdown of when the vaccines were given and how many were given in Beaufort County, to Beaufort County residents. So in the second column, or first column, you can see the week. The second column, you can see the number of people that received the second dose during that week. And then you can see where the eighth-month window comes in on the third column. So what I wanted to do was, I'm not going to be able to just open up the clinic and say, come through, make an appointment, come through. It's way too many for that to happen. So we're going to have to do those pods like we did early on while we were at the Community College with all the people coming through that way. So in order to do that, breaking down in these different colored blocks, if you receive the shot during this time, you're going to come through and get that third booster shot during this operation. So you can see in, over the October, we're going to have a three-day operation, so three days that we're going to be open and try to get everybody in. That 11, the green column shows you how many I expect to come through. So we're going to try to run, for that first group, you can see 1,162. We're going to be prepared to do those 1,162 people within those three days of operations. So we'll, once we know that's what we're going to do. Again, I don't know this is what we're going to do, but it tells you what the operation is. And then you can see that the second group is going to be 6,320 people, and then we get to 3,692 in 1531. So you can see this is major size operation we're talking about. This is because, early on, y'all remember, people were going to Berkey County to get vaccines, they were going to Greenville, to the big Epi group mega center that they had operating, people were getting them all over the place. We don't expect that to happen again. We don't know that mega center's going to be open. So where are they going to come? To us. And we expect to see a lot more than what we did see. So that's why we're going to plan for these numbers over here, which is 70% of the number of people that got the vaccine total during that timeframe. So for planning operations, I wanted to see how intense this is going to end up being, and then ward come. The thing is, is though, if the FDA comes up with an approval in 20th of September, we're going to try to be doing this, our first part of October, before I get a chance to come talk to y'all again about this stuff. So we may be doing something real quick and up in operations, but we've got the plan going on, we have the EOC group coming, you know, together to make sure all the operations occur. I'm not so much worried about October, but when we get into that November timeframe, we're going to be hopping at that point. So just to finish up on vaccine information, we still do the vaccination at the Health Department. We're doing first doses on Wednesdays and Thursdays. Actually, it should be 12:15, because I moved that to get that window in there, 12:15 to 4:15. And then we're doing second doses by schedule on Mondays. When we go to these operations, we're going to probably change those operation days as well, in order to accommodate all the staff working out these, at the pods when we get to that point. So those will probably change relatively soon. Again, we're doing everybody 12 years and older, and you can make your appointments online or by calling that COVID hotline, the 940-6150, and BAT can also transport you There we go. So, any questions?
Randy?
The $100 incentive money is over with. Do you think that helped? And if it did help, will they, will it return?
I heard it helped some. I don't know if it's going to come out. One of my criticisms of it was, how many people are going to wait for that third dose? Going to be waiting to see if they get that coming up? So that's one of my criticisms of it. So I don't know the answer to that.
Any, any other questions? Thank you very much. Jim?
Have a good, pleasant evening.
Next item is Human Resources. Delores?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The request tonight is to add the classification of Assistant 911 Communications Manager to the Beaufort County Salary Plan. During the MAPS Classification and Pay Study in 2017, Beaufort County positions were analyzed and employees completed MAPS questionnaires to describe their current job duties. Some positions changed substantially from 2017 until January of 2021, when we implemented the study. Position number 432520 in Communications was classified then as a Telecommunications Shift Supervisor by the MAPS Group in 2017. The position, which is now vacant, has developed and serves as the Second-in-Command in Communications. This position assists the 911 Communications Manager with duties and in the absence of the manager takes on that role. The request is to add the classification of Assistant 911 Communications Manager to the Beaufort County 2122 Salary Plan at a salary grade 70. In order that the position, which currently classified as a Telecommunications Shift Supervisor, may be reallocated to a more appropriate classification, which reflects the current job duties of the position. The 911 Communications Manager was determined to be a salary grade 72 by the MAPS Group during the study. And the submitter recommendations are, based on the job description, we recommend approval to add the classification of Assistant 911 Communications Manager at a salary grade 70 in our 2122 Beaufort County Salary Plan. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Langley. For this pay grade, what is the bottom, middle?
Good, okay, I have that for you. The hiring rate for a pay grade 70 is 48,554. The minimum is 50,982. The midpoint is 63,121, and the maximum is 77,686.
Delores, what, what kind of turnover we had as it relates to the Director of the 911 Center? I think, have we lost two?
We, we recently have a new director, and that position now is the 911 Communication Manager, and that's been fairly recently. I don't have the exact date.
So we, we stand ready based on turnover that we need to have that person in place?
Actually, the employee that's the director now actually left this position and went into the director. into the director slot.
We're talking about adding the classification. Now, are we talking about adding a classification or are we talking about adding a position?
Adding a classification.
Are we going to hire, is this going to create a new position?
No, sir.
In that department?
No, sir.
Is this person going to continue to run a shift or do whatever they're doing? Or are they going to be there at the right hand of the manager?
I might ask Charlie. Actually, they're going to be, I think, based on the job description, at the right hand.
Well, then, how do you do this without creating a new position?
The position right now is classified as a tele, previously, when the study was done in 2017, was classified as a Telecommunications Shift Supervisor and now that role has expanded. So it's the same position.
Are they still going to be a shift supervisor?
That, I do not know.
No, these are not very definite answers to my questions because I can't, I can't tell whether you're going to hire a new employee. I don't see how they're going to be at the right hand of the manager without that being a new position.
It's a position that's existing and it's actually changing, based on the job description.
But if they're a telecommunicator, are they going to be running a shift or in the wings with this position? Or are they going to be, it sounds to me like you're creating a new position and a new employee.
Well, they can't do that.
No, sir. We couldn't do that.
They're going to have to strengthen.
Just strengthening the existing position that has stronger duties.
Well, how are you going to fill the telecommunicator position that this is replacing?
I don't have the answer to that, Brian. Can you share that? We're not going to be.
It's an existing position that's currently doing additional duties and stronger responsibilities within the organization, as I understand it. And that was not picked up at the time in 17, when MAPS did the work. So this is a, this, after studying that position, is a request to put that position at the correct level in the grouping that it should be. So that would be a 70 as an assistant role.
What is the classification of this person now?
The position is vacant.
It's vacant?
Yes, sir.
So we have, how many vacancies do we have in telecommunications?
In telecommunications, we actually have three.
How many people work a shift in telecommunications?
I don't have that information for you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should table this until someone is here who can give us definite answers. This looks like more mumbledy peg from the Sheriff's Department to me. I so move. Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to table. Is there a second? We have a second. Any discussion before we vote? All those in favor, table and raise your right hand. Those opposed? Thank you, Delores. You did the best you could do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're down to item number J. Item for discussion, Tax Assessor, Lloyd.
Have y'all done well this evening?
So essentially, what I provided and should be in front of you, the agenda abstract, is essentially what we would like to do is, we would like to have a formalized Board of Equilization Review in the fall of this year. Statutorily, that's absolutely allowed. It's encouraged even to be able to, you have four opportunities, I would say, to appeal your property taxes to a Board of Equilization Review, personal property being one of them when the billing comes out. And the county, I've not seen that that's been the norm. I think a lot of it's been taken care of internally, which there is some ability for me to do. However, if they refute my, you know, decision, so to speak, as the assessor, it then would be, it should be able to go to the board. So we would like just to have a regular date and I think we provided, I'm looking at Katie, always super helpful to me. I believe we provide a few possible dates here for these boards, just like y'all would have done in the spring. But like I say, they would be for personal property and also the potential for, if there was an automobile, for some reason, that had a reason to appeal or something to that. And we also, as y'all probably have known, we did make a few corrective changes since I've been in office. So we are trying to allow everyone to be able to come in and be able to be heard. So there's the potential for a few more people to want to appeal to the board if that's the case. So that's the reason for being here as far as that goes. And also, the dates are in front of you. I believe we have Tuesday, November 9th, Wednesday, November 10th is possible, or we also had Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, the week of November 16th. I think two dates would really be enough, to be honest. One would really be more of an alternative. I don't believe at this time we're going to have a full docket by any means, but I still believe we should be able to have the opportunity to give the taxpayer a docket chance.
Okay. Which dates? Ed?
Well, you.
I thought we need to pick because, you know.
Yeah, we're perfectly, my office, yeah, my office.
Yeah.
I was going to say, my office fully feels at this point that we should be able to do one date with an alternative or two dates if you want to schedule that way. Chair boy.
The 9th and 10th, is that okay? Because the next week gets pretty close to Thanksgiving. And we only have to have, is it four? Lloyd?
That's correct.
Four?
Yes, correct.
All right. Someone want to make a motion for?
Some move.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, Tuesday, November 9th and Wednesday, November 10th, raise your hand. You don't have another one, do you?
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, we're down to Emergency Management. The first one is Volunteer Fire Department Loss Revenue, Art Funding. Chris, you're already up there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I tried to pass it off to Lloyd, but he didn't take me on that. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So if, about a month ago, we, our office was tasked to try to evaluate the impacts that COVID may have had on our fire departments, particularly with revenue. As we engaged in those conversations with our fire departments, the continuing theme of our fundraising efforts really suffered because of COVID. We couldn't have some of the fundraisers that we would typically have in a year because of current COVID restrictions. So as we looked at that, we asked for each fire department to provide us with what those numbers were. And we tried to pick a baseline year, which for us would have been 2019, the last, most recent year that they had prior to the impact of COVID, and then 2020. So of our departments, we had six that reported funding back to us. And we have provided you all with a summary of that spreadsheet, but I want to dive a little bit deeper into those numbers because what we found is, it became very difficult for us to say, this is the exact dollar amount that COVID impacted your department. So as we look at Blunts Creek Fire Department at the top, for this particular purpose in our inquiry on it, we were really focused on donations and fundraisers. That was the input that the fire departments gave to us, saying that that had the biggest impact from COVID. So Blunts Fire Department, Blunts Creek Fire Department was a department that actually did better in 2020 than they did in previous fundraising initiatives. And that's because they switched up their fundraising program. They moved away from some of the request letter of donations and meals and barbecue chicken plates that you typically see and did a picture-type fundraiser. So it actually bared more fruit for them. So they were one of the departments who switched their fundraising activities and found some fruit on the tree as a result. Bunyan Fire Department reported a loss. Two of their particular fundraisers in the past have been their golf tournament and their turkey shoot. And they haven't had either of those because of COVID. But they're also a department who has, over the last or recent years, has struggled to find fundraisers who really bear fruit in their particular community. When we look at Old Ford, most everybody associates Old Ford with the rodeo. In 2019, they had the rodeo and in the fundraiser, the way that they presented the numbers as an income or revenue for the fundraiser for 2019 was $77,220. What we have found in further research in that is that didn't, that was not their net profit. That was the gross income. The expenses for that was actually about $32,317. So for them in 2019, what they netted in profit from that initiative was $44,903 and in 2020, it was $25,403. Now, Old Ford is also one of those departments, because we asked for these numbers per calendar year, the impacts from COVID have happened to them in 2021. So they typically had that rodeo in February of this year. Because we asked for this information in the 2020 calendar year, that lost revenue would not show in this report. In departments who have similar instances, it's something that we would, that we would encourage you as a department, if we're looking at those impacts from COVID, that we revisit that in the years to come, as long as these COVID restrictions continue to impact fundraisers. Pamlico Beach was another department who made some adjustments in their fundraising capabilities, but not enough to offset what they would typically have. So Pamlico Beach is a department that typically does one big fundraiser a year. They mail out to everybody in their district, kind of like the letter that says, hey, give us a donation and buy a chicken plate from us and our chicken sale is going to be on this date. And a lot of the times, they get donations and nobody buys the chicken plate. Or they might come in and give, you know, more money than what the chicken plate costs. So the numbers of that fundraiser can vary from year to year, but they did show a decrease in last year of about $5,000. Pintown, from review of everything they presented, has been very cut and dry in their numbers. And the number that they reported under their fundraiser loss of $46,332, that is actually the amount of money that they lost. So that 46,322 that they reported in 2019, that's what they made after the expenses of their fundraisers. And as many of you know, they typically do two a year, a spring and fall barbecue meal, and then they do the turkey shoot and a gun raffle that's associated with it in 2020. For that calendar year, they did not have those. So that is the loss that they reported for 2020. Pungah River is a department that tends to base their fundraising initiatives where they are operationally. So if they, you guys are familiar with their budget, a very low-funded department when we look at it just from a tax basis. So if they're having a really bad year operation, if they have a number of trucks that break, fuel prices are up, utility costs are up, they may have more fundraisers than they would on a good year where they don't have those costs. So their fundraisers tend to fluctuate year to year. That's what we noticed in 2019. They actually had six fundraisers that reported in 2019 for a total of $11,997. They could not have that number of fundraisers last year because of COVID. They actually were in the preparations of having two, a breakfast and a lunch, or a breakfast and a supper fundraiser, in which they had bought the food. COVID restrictions hit and they ended up selling the food to members of their community to try to recoup those losses. And then Sydney Fire Department is very similar to Pamlico Beach. They typically do one large fundraiser a year. And last year, they could not do that. So this definitely, as we dug into the numbers and the frequency in which departments do fundraisers and how that ebbs and flows with operations or what's successful to them and what's not, we found it very hard to say, this is the dollar amount that departments lost because of COVID. And we just wanted to present that to you tonight. If there's any other questions that we can answer for you, I'd be happy to do that. Or if there's more information that you'd like us to dig into and try to find.
Commissioner, if I could just add one thing to that?
Yes.
With Chris in this information, this did include all fire departments and all EMS agencies. So the data you see here is the data of those that participated or provided something back. So when we look at this, these are the departments that sent something back in, but it was out for fire and EMS agencies. So there's the EMS agencies as well. Just wanted to throw that.
He didn't know that.
Sir?
He didn't know that.
He did know that.
Why he didn't say? It was his idol.
I made an assumption.
Go ahead.
You said, you said that, I think you said in your presentation, there was only six that responded?
Yes, sir.
Now, what was the reason that the other ones didn't respond? Did you have, had any conversation with them?
So when we initially started on this, Manager Alleged actually came to the Fire and EMS, countywide Fire and EMS Association meeting. He presented that for the first time to them. We in turn followed up with an email to all fire departments and EMS agencies the day after. Since that meeting, we've had one fire chief's meeting in which we reminded everyone to do that and we have sent two reminder emails.
For the public, would you state the ones that didn't respond?
Oh, man, you're going to call me off on my own?
Walton Station, one of them.
No, no. So let's see, we have Aurora.
Okay.
Bath, Bellhaven, Chalkawinnity, Clark's Neck, Pantigo.
And all of those, and all of those have fundraisers throughout the year?
Yes, sir. Various forms, yes, sir. And then.
Commissioner Booth, not that they intentionally decided not to respond, some of those agencies may have made, had gotten additional fundraisers or raised more money during COVID. And when they looked at it, they said, well, we don't need to submit this. So if there's an assumption that they just kind of ignored us, that's not the case. I think we felt like we had good communication with everybody.
Yes, sir.
The reason I ask is, is if we do anything, I want to be fair to everybody. And I find it very, very interesting that the smallest departments raised the most money, that they didn't need any. That's the reason I asked the question that I asked. I mean, if, that's the part that I'm having to deal with. I mean, you take one of these small departments, you take Chalkawinnity, Pintown, but you take one like Bunyan, which is a small one, River, they, if they don't have a fundraiser and they're not on the list, Walton Station have a turkey shoot, don't they? And they're not on the list. But the key that I want to do, if we do anything, I want to be fair to everybody.
Yes, sir. I understand.
Randy?
And with that said, who has the idea as what is fair as far as deviating up COVID money to these fire departments? How can we, is there a plan?
What I can say to you is, we've had those internal discussions and what the folks here wanted to do is give you all that information. Because I can assure you that whatever you do, someone's not going to be happy with it. You could give, I mean, my understanding in reviewing, I think it was the House budget, not the Senate budget, but in the House budget, there's an appropriation in there for $10,000 for every fire department in North Carolina, and they're using COVID money to do that. I mean, you could, as a board, say, okay, we get it. We're going to give everybody $10,000. We're going to give everybody $20,000. We're going to give everybody $5,000, whatever it is. We were trying to get you some hard numbers. Some of those departments clearly said, look, we, our community stepped up. We made more money during COVID than we did prior years because folks recognized we were having a hard time and they stepped up and helped us. So some of those departments did better. So I don't know how you do that. I don't know how you can be fair and equitable to everybody. What we wanted to do was try to ask that question and say, what was it that you lost? Because that is what, from the federal legislation that Treasury interpreted, we have some pretty strict guidelines related to local governments about how we have to show how we lost money or didn't lose money. They're real strict on those guidelines. And so what we wanted to try to do was mimic that in some case because we're passing that money along. If you decide to do that, you're passing those funds along to another agency, but you ultimately are held responsible for making sure that they're appropriated correctly and the supporting documentation is there. So that's why we wanted to ask the question, okay, from this period to this period, there was a period of time where you were not COVID-impacted. This was a period of time you were. Yes, there's still some impact this year. So maybe later on, at the end of this calendar year, we look at it again for those who were impacted again this year. But we were trying to figure out what was a good, hard number to look at so that we could defend it if the auditors from Treasury ever came and said, we want to see your books. Now, that being said, the state of North Carolina, if it goes through their budget, has just arbitrarily put a number. And I think you could probably. And I think you could probably do that. I think every department in Beaufort County, if you said $10,000, I think you could legitimately say that they all lost at least $10,000. I think that's reasonable. I'm not sure how much more you could go. I think some of the numbers suggest that it's higher than that. And I think that you would have some of them say, well, that's not fair. But you're going to hear that's not fair, no matter what you do. I'm sorry to tell you that. I think you all recognize that. But that shouldn't stop you, I think, from trying to do something if you want to.
I have a question.
Yes. Putting this chart together, how do grants figure into this? I'm puzzled about, you know, I thought grants were for a specific purpose. They were not for operating, and we're talking about operations. Looks to me like we ought to take grants out of the mix altogether.
So for us, as we evaluated, that was one of those income, those revenue items that departments reported, so we put it on the table, but we did not look at that in our review of it. Some grants are more dependable than others. So for example, the state grant oftentimes comes around annually, and it's a 50/50 match. And a lot of departments use that for equipment and PPE and things of that nature. And then you have some grants that come up annually, but there's, the likelihood of it being awarded to you is like playing the lottery. So the firefighter's assistant grants, which is your big pocket of money that a lot of departments put in their big item list for, that's a very difficult.
Yeah, it's a crapshoot, and that's why I think grants should come out.
Yes, sir.
Of it altogether, because some departments may not even apply for grants.
Yes, sir.
You know, they're too specific. I think if you pull grants out of it, I don't see how, I agree with taking a look at 2021 too also, but I don't see how that we can divide a pot of money up that's any larger than what we can show that they lost. You know? Because if you give more money away than what you can show that they lost, you may have to give some of it back. But if you take up what the whole loss was, and then we decide how to appropriate it, looks to me like the way to do it, and take grants out of it, because grants, taking grants out of it is going to possibly make some of the losses bigger. It doesn't look like it here, but it could.
Do we know the total loss or gain for the whole county?
For COVID?
For, like, with the numbers you've given us, if you add and subtract the losses and gains by all of these departments, what does that figure?
For the six, I could do some quick math for you.
Well, and that's fine.
$95,180.
As a gain or a loss?
Loss.
Just of the chart that you have.
Yes, just of the six.
Dealing with donations.
This year will probably be more.
When I added it up, it came to $76,000.
So.
I can confirm that and get back to you, but I don't have it right in mind.
That balances out with those.
I think that number is important to know, because then we can say, Beaufort County lost this amount of money.
Right.
EMS fire everybody for COVID years, just to that.
I think year 95 is only the losses, not balanced out by the ones that made more.
No, sir. I could have certainly made a mistake.
Okay.
But it's more than $76,000.
Is, in the ARP, is there anything in there for equipment that's more specialized when they go to a scene where there's possibility of COVID? I mean, or, I'm trying to think that all of our fire departments have to experience that, whether you make three calls or whether you make 50 calls. And what I'm trying to come up with is, you know, what would help every department make them, you know, feel better about going to a COVID call? Because I thought this would be a good, I mean, I was one of the ones that supported this, but I just think it's really hard based on, you know, what we're hearing between departments, based on, you know, when they have a fundraiser and when they don't, that sort of thing. You know, I hate for us to cut a check to one for 40 just because it shows up, and then we've got another department that needs a gear for one individual that might, what does a set of gear for a new volunteer cost? Is it $10,000?
No, no, not quite that much. If you're not counting an air pack, just the turnout gear that you see them in, coat, helmet, gloves, and boots, you're probably around $3,000 to $3,500.
Okay. I mean, that's, I guess where I'm coming from, is that.
And again, this was a preliminary look for us when we had those conversations with the fire department. We asked them, what is your biggest impact from COVID and the fundraiser and donations was the first thing that came back, and that's where we started looking.
So Mr. Chairman, since the state has done a similar kind of thing, they anticipated that, let us reach out to some of the folks at the state and figure out how they came up with their number. The association has also, as you're aware, you may or may not be aware, the association and the League of Municipalities has been tasked by the General Assembly to be so-called experts to help counties and municipalities in going through ARPA funding. They haven't been able to start that yet because we don't have a state budget yet, and those appropriations are in the state budget. So let us reach out to them. I don't think that this is a unique situation just to Beaufort County. This is happening in all 100 counties. If a board of commissioners is trying to assist those groups, this is not a unique situation. So there should be some opportunity to have some broad discussion across the state to make sure that we can all stand scrutiny on it, and I think the association would help with that. I think the League of Municipalities could help with that. So again, they wanted, we wanted to bring this to you so you saw what the numbers were. I think one of the challenges that we have is, we supported all those agencies with PPE and with protective gear for COVID-related stuff. So that kind of comes off the table, because that worked through state, EM, down to us, and we helped to make sure that they had those as they needed it. And you've just got to be careful how you, you've just got to be able to stand scrutiny when somebody, when an auditor comes in and looks and says, okay, show us how you allocated those funds.
Is everybody in agreement that let staff come back to us at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. You want to go to the next item, Chris? Contract renewal for general mitigation support, maintenance, and appliance application.
So as many of you are aware, there have been various aspects of the county's mitigation efforts that we have used contracts for to fulfill in the past, Mideast being one of those. This particular contract is for service, support, and maintenance. So if I could kind of walk you through that, imagine all the legwork that goes into putting information together, presenting it to FEMA, and reaching that award notification. So all the public meetings, the paperwork, all the back-and-forth email and informational exchanges with both the state and FEMA, that is the work or the scope of work that this contract would address. And as we look at the projects that are currently on the table, we are, as many of you know, FEMA isn't exactly timely, right? It takes a long time to go through those processes. Right now, we have 36 elevation projects, one commercial relocation, and 18 acquisitions that were submitted under Florence. That is currently underway with the evaluation process. That we have received preliminary notifications stating that we have moved to, we have moved to the next tier of that award process. So that's what's currently underway. Well, since then, the FMA 2020 money has come out, in which we believe we have some more properties, roughly about eight or so, that's being reconsidered for approval. So that's eight on top of the Florence storms. And then we now have, we're in that window of time with the FMA 2021, where we're getting ready to start the process of submitting those applications, and we believe we have 20 to 30 houses that would go under that. So it's a lot of information exchange, both at the state and federal level, that gets us to the point of having those projects awarded. So this particular contract is for Mideast to provide those services for us. It is a four-year contract, but there is verbiage that either party can terminate that as well. The other thing that we keep in mind with contracts like this is, there's a little bit of chance that also goes into this. If we have a storm that impacts us in the next couple of weeks or before this hurricane season comes in, all of the work associated with the public information and collecting of that information and damages and loss also would be covered under this scope of work.
I don't know what, it was last month or the month before, but we approved the state taking over that, right?
So that was for the management of the project once it's awarded. So FEMA awards it, and the work actually starts to go underway with the mitigation process. This is all the work that goes before that in order to complete the application window and get a property approved.
I have a question. Yes. I want to be sure I understand these programs, because I've been casting a bad eye on some of this stuff. These are properties that the owners did not purchase flood insurance for. Is that correct?
No, sir. Not particularly the case for all properties. This could be repetitive loss properties. So someone could have had flood insurance, and it's been rebuilt or renovated several times since then. So not all the properties under this program were residents who failed to have flood insurance.
But most of the repetitive losses, they run the premium up to the point that you can't afford it. So I would say that repetitive losses probably didn't have insurance policies.
We're finding that not to be the case. I understand your point, I just can't say that is the case for all.
Well, why didn't, why didn't, you mean they're going to pocket the insurance check, and we're going to come back and fix them again?
No, sir. I'm not following you on that.
So the challenge, Commissioner Richardson, is FEMA has a program where they continue to just pay, they pay you to fix your house over and over and over and over again, instead of taking a big chunk and elevating it and getting it out so it doesn't flood again. And they finally figured out that it makes sense to elevate the project, spend three or four times more and get it up out of the flood than to continue to pay to repair it year after year after year. I mean, it's just common sense. And they finally figured out that that's what they ought to do. You ought to fix the problem instead of continuing to pay to fix it every time.
Well, yeah, and I think what you're talking about makes sense. The problem is, we've had so many floods, that just about every property in the county that could possibly be impacted must have been impacted by now. But the second part of this is that these 18 acquisitions that you're talking about here, I have a problem with that, because if you acquire those properties, they come off the tax rolls. And, you know, you can never build on them again, and they're highly restrictive, and what do we do with them? I'm not going to vote for anything that takes properties off the tax roll. Now, if you can work a deal where you're going to, well, it's the same thing, what I was about to say is the same thing. But I'm not willing to vote to take properties off the tax roll. I've had enough of that.
And any of the grant programs that we get, FMA, as soon as we get notification that those projects are awarded by FEMA, the final stamp on that is us bringing it to you as a board and signing off on that award. Those particular cases, these 18 are in queue, but before there's any signature tying us to those responsibilities, that comes back to you as board.
Are we going to be able to segregate those, or are we going to be told, it's a lump-sum package, take it or leave it?
I'm not for certain of that. Manager Alligood, are you?
I don't know the answer to that. I can tell you that the majority of the acquisitions, I believe, are in the city of Washington. And we will be moving forward, as I understand it, doing our own now. That we won't, it used to be, back several years ago, and of course, when you think about these programs, they're all five and six and eight years ago, because they're so slow in getting things done. We used to combine projects together. The county would say to the municipalities, if you have something, send it to us. And we would submit them all in an effort to try to have a larger pool and make it look better and get them awarded. And to some extent, I think that helped. But then, what we found out was, when that occurs, then the county's name goes on all of them. And we got tired of cutting grass in the town of Bellhaven, because we owned property in Bellhaven.
Yeah, that's part of what I'm getting at.
So what we said from now on was, we're not going to do that. You guys can do your, we'll be glad to certainly help you. And we are not going to acquire properties in municipalities. If they want to do that, they can do that. And our goal is to try for those to be elevations and to keep those on the tax books. We recognize that very clearly as well, that we don't want to take stuff off the tax rolls.
Yeah, I don't want the county to acquire stuff, even outside of municipality, because this becomes a long-term impact on real estate development, on a whole bunch of things. It's very negative for the citizens of our county.
Mr. Richardson, Woody Jarvis used to send me bills every month about cutting grass in Bellhaven.
That's right. Any other discussion, questions? Are we entertaining a motion to approve the contract?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the contract, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, thank you, Chris. All right, item number three is the receipt of the Bath Community EMS building. Carney?
Commissioner Revholtz, my math was off. Just wanted to let you know that. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to stand before you again on Bath Community EMS. It's been a long process as they have officially entered in dissolution. They are at a point now where we were able to come out, they were able, through our attorney and their attorney, to speak a verbiage on a deed and come to an agreement which stands before you now. They are still in the process of complete dissolution. We are going to be, also, we're working where we would receive an EMS truck from them as well. They're not at that point yet. That's still going through questions with the Attorney General's Office. But for the Bath Community Building itself, you have a deed in front of you for this property. There is one thing I'd like to bring to your attention on page 411. You've probably already seen it. They had one request in the deed when it was transferred, that it would remain in use for EMS or some, our final agreement was some type of emergency service use. And if the building were to stop for a total of six months consecutive, that it was not used for something in a first responder or emergency service use, that that building would then be released from the county and go to Bath Fire Department, where it would stay in some type of emergency service use. The building's in a prime location for us for EMS. We certainly don't see that happening. We'll always have a use for it, but they requested it. That's the final verbiage we were able to agree upon to bring before you. So I just ask you now, or present to you now the deed, and be glad to answer any questions on that.
Does that property flood during hurricanes?
No, sir. Now, all around it, and you would not want to walk across the grass of this property, but the ditches around it all flood up, the water does not come in that building.
Comes on the property.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
It was around $32,000 to $35,000 of an outfit. With that, it was some building repair. The other things we did is, we converted a meeting room into bedrooms. We had to install a sprinkler system into the building and general outfit to make it where we could put crews inside the building versus an individual. All that's been done, yes. And with that, that was funding, again, if you remember, that community granted the county to be able to do that.
I think we also did, did we do it, or did they do it, some improvements to the septic system?
Yes, both.
Both.
Both with that. We actually took part of the first monies they gave us, and they matched or halved the septic tank with a second pot of money. But a complete septic system has been put in.
Any other?
So there has been a building inspection done on this facility?
When you say a building.
By a certified inspector?
Well, we work with the building inspector as we did everything, yes.
So that's been done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Well, it was, it was being used already, but we worked, we had to have permanent work with the inspector to do the things that we did and all that.
All right, we need a motion, David, okay? Got a motion by Ed and a second by Randy? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of accepting the property from the Bath Community EMS, raise your right hand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
We tabled it.
It was, we had a table.
We had a motion and it was approved six, six to one to table it to the next meeting. Sorry. All right, down to Public Works, potential ARP, Public Works Project, Christina?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I'm not sure the page number, but in your agenda packet, you'll see there was a request at previous meetings that Public Works, specifically the Beaufort County Water Department, provide a list of potential projects that could be funded by the American Recovery Act funds. So you have that list in front of you. There are 10 items listed. First is, well, the items are listed and then there are estimated costs there. So do you have any questions about those?
I have some questions.
Yes, sir.
Okay, take item number four and five.
Yes, sir.
Create those loops. What are the benefits of that?
The benefits of, those are both located on the south side of the river, the western part of the county. If you see, that's Carrow Road and Bar Road and then also Pollard Road and Caton Road. Those are two areas that, for those of you that have been on the commission for a while, you know that we do have pressure issues in the western section of the south side of the river. So that's along Highway 33 towards the Craven County line. There's been multiple discussions throughout the years of ways to improve that. There's been discussion about the construction of a new elevated storage tank. When Withers and Ravenel completed the hydraulic modeling, this is, these are two of the projects that came out of their suggestions. There are some other suggestions that they have above that are not capital projects that are more working with tank levels and that type of thing. But these are the capital projects that they suggested for that. If you look at a map of our system and you look at this area, there's actually only a single feed that feeds the most north, northwestern portion of the southern part of the county. So of the, of the south side of the river. It's kind of difficult to explain because it's not the, the northwestern part of the county, it's the northwestern part of the south side of the county. So we're talking about up on Highway 33 just before you cross into the Pitt County line in that area. And that is fed by a single, single feed from Frederick Road off of Highway 17. So again, if you're visualizing the county, you'll see that that's quite a large number of customers that are fed off of that single feed. And so that by installing the, that six-inch loop from Carrow Road to Bar Road, that would provide a secondary loop. So then there would be two sources of water that would provide water to that far northwestern portion of the south side.
How low do the pressures get in the low-pressure areas?
Under normal working conditions, everything's fine. You know, obviously from a day-to-day activity, there's not a problem. The problem that we have is when one hydrant is opened up or something changes within the system. So as long as, as everything, it's a closed loop, then everything operates at normal operating pressures. But when there is a water main break anywhere along that area, then that's when the pressures drop and the telephone calls, the phones start to ring and we start to have issues and may potentially have to issue the system pressure advisories.
Randy?
Is this anywhere the numbering system here, this is not an order of importance, I don't think. It's just, it is?
No, it is. It is. It's what Water Department staff would recommend. The SCADA system, again, is, again, those that have been here, we've had the discussion about replacing the SCADA system, even in the budget workshops this past year. We said that we were going to be bringing that back to you. And at that point in time, we were thinking it would either be a project that we would use outside financing to do because of the lower interest rates. So again, having the ARPA funds available to finance the SCADA project is, would definitely be the preferred method to finance that project. But that is a project that is definitely the top priority of the Water Department.
Nine and 10 is just, you can't put a figure on it?
Nine and 10, I, there was not a figure available at that time. I do have a figure now. Number nine, the estimated figure would be $515,000. And then the estimated figure for number 10 would be $1,375,000. That would be comparing, combining all of the individual areas. And again, the ones listed on number 10, these are not, the, excuse me, the subdivisions listed in number 10, and I will list these for those in the audience. Winsong 2, Winsong 3, Friedman Drive, Credo Drive, Mordecai Lane, Ashton Drive, Topping Road, Lovick Lane, as well as Sam Grady Road. Those are areas that people have called the Water Department on numerous occasions inquiring about, people that have purchased lots, people that are inquiring about purchasing lots and want to know, is there water in those particular areas? Winsong 2, Winsong 3, I believe there's been a letter that's been distributed that Commissioners have read about that. That is an existing subdivision off of Highway 33, east of Aurora, basically at the end of our line. It's at the very end of our eight-inch main before you cross over into Pamlico County. Then you have Friedman Drive, which is again in the Blunt Creek area, Credo Drive, Mordecai Lane, Ashton Drive. For those on the Water Committee, you'll recall that residents in that area, or especially Credo Drive and Mordecai Lane, approached us, possibly 18 months ago, about bringing water to them. That is located off of Kelly Road, down near Potter's Marina. Ashton Drive is an existing subdivision that's located in that same general area. And then Topping Road. Lovick Lane is off of Asbury Church Road. Sam Grady Road is off of Magnolia School Road. So again, these are just things that popped into our mind that, that people have requested. So that's where those came from.
Yes.
Looking at your list, I know it's a potential list and I know you're not expecting to get all 10 of them.
No, sir.
I understand that. But, but is there any way possible that we could apply for some grants to help offset the cost of some of these?
We generally do. SCADA system, we have been trying to get grant money for the SCADA system replacement every which way from Friday. All of the past. Nobody works on, I'm trying to get it from the state, nobody works on Saturday. But all of the Division of Water Infrastructure projects, we have talked with them repeatedly about that. And because we have, we have a SCADA system, so it's maintenance and repair. If we didn't have a SCADA system, then we would be, grant funds would be available for the purchase of the new. But they do not provide the grants for repair of existing. So each of our other projects, we tried to tack on as much as we can and they still catch us on that too because our chlorine conversion, our gas conversion to liquid chlorine, we've tried to incorporate that into it and we've come back specifically on the same note that SCADA, SCADA repairs will not be included in part of the project.
There's nothing wrong with your list. I was just wondering, I was, off the top of my head, it's right around $4 million.
Understand.
And I was just wondering, was there some more money out there you could get?
And we will continue asking. There, and again, the state has a lot of funds available. They, they do, it's just as, as the commission has money that they're trying to determine how they want to allocate those funds. The state is also in that same situation. I was at a conference where the department, excuse me, the Secretary of DEQ spoke, and that's exactly what she said, is that we are having these funds coming in from the federal government and we're at this point trying to determine the best way to allocate those, whether it will be through. Right now, they are looking to still do that division and allocation through their existing programs. So it depends on how they change it. And that's one of the things that we actually spoke to her about and asked her to relax some of the requirements in order to allow us to get some of the projects done that we need to get done. But again, we will continue to, to do that, to look for grant. If these, the loops, you know, like I said, Withers and Ravenel had these as potential projects, so that is what we would do. As we are wrapping up these capital projects that we currently have funding for, we would begin the next cycle and in hopes that we would receive some grants to do installations possible. The SCADA system is my number one concern, beyond a shadow of a doubt. Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other discussion?
I'm, so, just I think a comment.
Yes, sir.
When we asked you, I think we were asking you to build out the system. That was the primary request we had. In other words, to take the lines out to the ends of the, of where they were needed. I don't recall being part of that with all the rest of this. But it really doesn't matter. The comment is that this is just one piece of several that we're gonna look at down the road to determine, because we don't have unlimited funds. You know, we've already committed about our whole first round of funds. And the next round will be about four and a half million. And we've got a whole series of projects to look at, so.
We, we've committed broadband, was it four million? And then on the building, was, did we come up with a figure like 1.2? 1.2? Two million, okay.
I guess Commissioner Revholtz, when, my confusion would be when you say to build out the system. I mean, a water system, we have, we have mains on all of the major highways that go from county line, county line to county line, but they're still, as development continues to come into the county and to grow, that the system will continue to grow to match that development. So there are subdivisions in locations now where there were not subdivisions 10 years ago when the system was originally being installed. So.
Look, we, we need to do the things in here that are going to serve the people that have been in here with requests over and over, like items nine and 10, which is the Row Avenue, Swan Point, Summer Isle, Morning Glory Lane, and then Freedom Drive, Credo Drive, Mordecai Lane, all those places. I, I think we should take the, the items number four and five, the sum of those is $3.3 million. The cost of doing those two, which, which serves the most people and actually gets us some revenue, because four and five produce no revenue, is I think we should take that 1.9 million and reduce the 3.2 million and those other two items by it and fund items nine and 10. Because that serves individuals. Looping a line is a great thing. I understand what you're talking about from an engineer's standpoint. Yeah, that works. But from a politician's standpoint, getting these people some water that need it is what we're supposed to be doing with this system. That was the whole purpose of the USDA system to begin with. So that's a motion.
Second.
Okay, so your motion is to do nine and 10.
Yeah, to, to take the sum of four and five and reduce four and five by the sum of nine and 10, that leaves you about a million dollars or a little more. Then she can spend it wherever she wants to on nine and 10.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm confused.
All right, let's go over it again. Let's go over it by steps. If you sum items four and five.
Now, now, let's, is number one in your number?
No, no, no. Let me, let's go over it by the steps. Take items four and five and sum them. You've got $3.3 million.
Okay.
She gave us a total for nine and 10 of 1.9 million, well, 1.9 million, seven, almost $2 million. So subtract $2 million from the sum of items nine and 10, the sum of items four and five, excuse me. You are funding nine and 10. That gets water to people, to citizens, to people. And that leaves $1,003,000 that she can use for looping. And there's several looping projects in here, so you don't have to worry about needing all that money for one looping project.
What is the total dollar amount of your motion? Let's put it that way. Okay.
No, yeah, I'm adjusting her numbers.
I think just from our perspective, we would be interested if you said, I want to fund this one, I want to fund that one. I want to fund number nine and number 10.
I want to fund number nine and number 10 at the expense of number four and five.
Right, but I don't think we, I don't think you're asking for four and five yet, just to say, we want nine and 10 and then we'll figure out where the rest of the money goes.
That's all right with me, as long as we're funding nine and 10. But those are the important things that need to be funded.
I, I disagree. I think the SCADA system is, is far more important than, than all the rest of this thing. I mean, because we, we need to make sure that we stay on top of the entire system. I mean, because if, if you don't have everything up to date and you can keep your water flow in the way that it should be flowing, so that you know what you need to know, you're wasting your time. We, we, and, and actually, the SCADA system is all, is, what is it, one, two, third cheapest on the, no, well, fourth cheapest, I see 75, on the whole list. And you, you're talking about $3.3 million. We're talking about 700,000, 700.
Mr. Chairman, let me address that. I agree 100%. I'm not changing the priority list that she has in all. What I'm saying is, if you take items number four and five and add them together, you've got $3.3 million. I'm saying let's reduce that by the amount of money that we need to fund items nine and 10. I'm not changing the priority. I'm not taking anything out. I'm just saying now we have less money for the loops. The loops are a whole lot less impressive to the citizens of Beaufort County than nine and 10 being able to get water. That's all I'm saying. So I don't have a bit of problem.
Go ahead, John, you say.
John?
Guys, I think we've, this is information we're being given. It's not time for voting on something because we haven't heard about the jail yet, which could be $4 million. So, you know, we, I think we can take all this information in and at some date after we get it all, then we can sit down and talk about which of the priorities, given the funds we have. I don't think voting on something like now, moving ahead, is, is appropriate since we don't know what all is gonna be and other requests we're gonna have.
Let me go, let me go back on that. I don't disagree at all with the procedure. I just want it to be clear from the board's perspective, if that's what the board believes, that giving people water in nine and 10 is more important than some engineered loops.
I mean, I don't know, I see where you're coming from, see where you're coming from, Mr. Richardson, but how many people are we talking about in nine and 10?
They can figure that out.
Okay, that's why I'm not ready to vote. I don't know. But I, but I think she could give me a number tonight about the SCADA system, how many we talking about. That's everybody that's on our water system.
SCADA's not an issue.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not, like John, I'm not ready to vote on itemizing right now. I don't have enough information.
Right, I, I think what John is saying is the total amount of money that we've got is 9.1 million and we're pretty well already set aside about 6 million. So we're looking at 3 million and we still have some other things on the table.
Mr. Richardson, would you change your, to, to put nine and 10 more, as a more of a priority than they are?
I think that might solve the problem that we move nine and 10 up to like where four and five are, move four and five down to where nine and 10 are. Maybe that solves the problem in the priority list.
So that, that's roughly 2 million, so then that leaves a million left for whatever else we may do.
No, because that, no, no, because whatever we may do in the future may end up being more important than any of this.
That's true, that's true.
Definitely, John.
Yeah. We're talking, we're talking priorities, you know, and I think the priority on nine and 10 is higher than four and five. That's really what I guess we're talking about.
So your motion is priority wise to move those up to the one and two?
If that clarifies things, I'll withdraw what I, my original motion and say that we need to prioritize nine and 10 need to be where four and five are and take four and five and put them down where nine and 10 are.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We're not saying, we're not spending any money right now.
We're not spending any money. That's what John says.
All right.
That's a motion.
You got a motion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Anything else on, on the ARP?
No, sir. Just if, if any of you have any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them. them.
You are, and you voted the other way. Okay, I'm wrong.
All right, we're down to 7 o'clock, so we're going to take a break, Christina.
Okay.
I, we're back to item number two, the NC DOT project betterment opportunity.
Yes, sir. The North Carolina Department of Transportation project, AR 2511, involves the widening of US Highway 17 from north of, North Carolina Highway 171 to existing multi-lane south of Williamson. That will require the relocation of existing Beaufort County water lines. North Carolina Department of Transportation includes in the cost of the project the relocation of existing water lines in kind, meaning that they replace it with the same length and size and type water line that we currently have. However, Beaufort County Water has requested that North Carolina DOT upsize approximately 2,400 linear feet of line from three inch to six inch to allow a future interconnection with Martin County water. Beaufort County would only be responsible for the increase in cost for the betterment. This is, the 2,400 linear feet of line is from basically Robertsonville Road to the Martin County line. We currently have a three inch line there. We would like, since they are having to replace that line, we would like to upsize that from a three inch to a six inch. That way, we would only have to pay for the increase in material cost and then just a slight increase in labor costs, rather than them going in, doing the widening of the project, installing the same three inch line, and then us coming back in the future and having to go back and reinstall that 2,400 feet of line in order to do an interconnect with Martin County. As you know, one of the things in the Water Department that we've, and the county as a whole, that we spent a lot of time and energy on in the past 10 years is being more resilient. Right now, Beaufort County water system, especially the north side, we receive water from the, the plant, the city of Washington plant, and we do also, we also have a secondary feed from the south side of the river, but we would like to also have, to have an interconnection with Martin County. And so the, currently at the, at this time, the estimated cost of Beaufort County would be 1,000, 148,017, including the engineering costs. The project is scheduled to be let in December, which at that time, the values may be revised. Funds would be allocated from water fund balance and attached, you have the utility construction agreement from NC DOT. So again, when we were looking at this, we're just trying to think ahead and trying to put the system in the best situation that we can. If we, at the time that we decide to go to do the interconnection with Martin County, Division of Water Infrastructure is currently encouraging systems to be interconnected with each other, so that is something that I feel very confident we would be able to get grant funds in order to complete that interconnection, to do, to purchase the vault, the meters, and any, any other things that are needed at that time.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, before you do that, would you hear me? Before you make the motion? Go ahead, doesn't matter. Go ahead.
You make a motion, second, then you have a discussion.
No, I won't, I won't.
You said it was, that you wanted to put the six inch?
2,400.
2,400?
Mm-hmm.
And 148,000 dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. But I don't have a problem with upsizing the line to a six inch line for long-term future, but do you realize where the water comes from for the Martin County system? From one of the most notoriously expensive water systems in the state of North Carolina, and also from one of the most notoriously, in its inception, low-quality sources of water. Beaufort County gets this water out of the Castle Hain Aquifer. All of our water comes out of the Castle Hain Aquifer. It is some of the best water in the United States, quality-wise, quantity-wise, and everything else. Martin County's water comes out of the river. You do not want to connect this system to an inferior system. That is a serious mistake. I know you're going to tell me it's treated and all that crap. Water tastes different from different places. Water has different quality from different places, and I ask you to remember, when we took the city's water out of Trander's Creek and all of the problems you had with that, the Martin County system is worse. Don't do this. I am not going to support this under any conditions to, to connect.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
If just doing the upgrade, doesn't necessarily say you have to connect?
No, sir. And, and I may regret this later, but I would like to say this regarding Commissioner Richardson's comments. This would be, this is not something that we were, were looking to do on a permanent basis. This would be for emergency interconnect. This would be if there was failure with electrical, failure with water lines, and a hurricane, a major storm event, something along those lines, when we needed water to, to provide either all of the system or a section of the system. Commissioner, Commissioner Richardson is correct. A portion of Martin County water is surface water. They do still have wells that they do still pull from. So I, I agree, mixing water is not the, is not the best idea, but if it comes to no water or water from Martin County, I believe that the residents would prefer to have the, the water from Martin County. And while, and I'm also, just because I can't help but protecting our, but defending our, the Martin County water system is managed by Public Water Supply, just as Beaufort County is, and goes through all of the testing and procedures and that type of thing. So if we ever do have to, if we do this and were to do an emergency connection, it would be water that has gone through the same standards as our water testing. But surface water does have a different chemistry and definitely has, and may have a different taste than what people would be accustomed to. But on a temporary emergency basis is what this would be used for.
The chances of you ever having to do that is very rare.
I hope it never happens to happen in my career.
Yeah, but it's best to be safe than sorry.
Let me go, I can address that, what she just said. When we put the, the line under the river from the north side of the, south side of the river, we've got three water producing, we have access to three water-producing plants in Beaufort County. That was supposed to take care of us forever. And we, and we have wells all over the county with generators on the wells. The chances of us running out of water are slim. I'm not saying, going to say impossible, but you do not want to connect this water system to the Martin County water system. Don't do that. You will regret it.
Okay, we, do we have a motion?
I'll make it again. Motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
At a second, okay. Any follow-up of the discussion? Now, the motion is to approve the construction agreement as well as the, or we call it the betterment opportunity, the upsize to six inches.
That's, that's the term in NC DOT, yes, sir, where they upsize the three inch to a six inch, yes, sir.
Are you talking about the interconnection with Martin County?
No, sir, this is, this has nothing to do with the interconnection. This is only changing the pipe size and getting us to that point.
I don't mind doing that.
Okay.
This is not the interconnection.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, we're down to the approval of the landfill commercial user after-hours access agreement.
Yes, sir. The Public Works Department recommends the approval of the attached landfill commu, excuse me, commercial user after-hours access agreement. Boy, that's a mouthful. An automated gate with card readers was recently installed at the Beaufort County landfill entrance. Select vendors, maintenance technicians, and cellular tower representatives require after-hours access. Commercial users have also expressed an interest in accessing the landfill on days that the site is closed to the public. Staff developed the attached agreement so that all after-hours users would be aware of the regulations of the landfill, and the county would have records of who, of the traffic that accessed the site. The agreement requires commercial users to establish an account, maintain their account in good standing, and follow landfill's rules and regulations. If users do not comply with the requirements, the county may revoke the after-hours privilege. It is recommended that a $10 fee will be charged per card for commercial users to offset the costs associated with the cards and labor to manage the program. The access agreement has been reviewed by the county attorney. Staff recommends that the Beaufort County Commissioners approve the commercial user after-hours access agreement and a revision of the fiscal year 2022 solid waste fee schedule to add the $10 per card fee. This user access agreement, obviously from this, is in order to allow us to track who is going in and out of the landfill. If you recall, the landfill now has revised operating hours. It's open on Tuesday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. So this would allow the commercial users to still access and to be able to go in and to dump their vegetative debris. And so we're, we're working through that process, and this is the first step to do that. But since we do have the gate with it locked, we want to have a record of everyone that's going in and out. And for those of you, again, that's familiar, there is a tower that is located on the site, a cell tower, so that there are other people that are coming in and out of our property. And we are trying to keep better track of that and maintain that better than it has been in the past. That's the point of this access agreement.
Go ahead. With the, with the after-hours, so those who are taking in vegetative debris, they don't, they don't have to weigh when they, when they go?
They would, they would still weigh, and there are cameras that are up, so if they did not self-report, and we're also in discussion with Waste Works to get an automated, an automated card, that they would also have to start swiping to do that. So this is just the first step in a process with the commercial vendors to do that. And again, this was still, so they would still be paying. Actually, this would be, would help us to track to maintain that they are paying as they go across the scale.
So what, that they'll pay for the weight of the material plus the $10 card fee?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Would you have automatic scales that weigh per hour ticket, or how would that work?
That's what we're working on with Waste Works to do that. We currently do not have that, but that is the next step in the process to do that.
And this is only at Hawkins Beach?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Got a motion for it.
Okay.
A motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve?
Second.
At a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. I, the next one is the approval of a two-year seller-year service contract for security cameras.
Yes, sir, Chairman. During the development of the fiscal year 2022 solid waste budget, staff explored options for security cameras at all 10 of the solid waste collection sites. Staff contacted EIS Data, which is our contracted IT contractor, to provide a quote for the cameras at those sites. But in discussion with EIS, it was determined that that was not feasible cost-wise because of the, the location of the sites, how spread out they were, how rural they were, as far as getting broadband and that type of thing, and then needing to get computers and, and all of the different issues that would be required. So EIS Data mentioned to, that we should investigate cellular service. Wes Olbermann contacted US Cellular to obtain a quote for one camera at each site, and that the cameras, they, they gave us a purchase price of $400 each, and then with the $39 per month plan, that's what was included in fiscal year 2022 budget. That file, the, the monthly plan provides the cellular service. Again, that's right in line with what a cell phone would be per site, but that also provides the file storage, and that's the issue that we were having if we were to do something hardwired at all of the sites. So the storage is included in that $39 per month plan. At that time, US Cellular said that he would check to see if he could do anything to give us a cost reduction, but of course, as we were preparing the budget back in January, February, we included the full $400. When the contract came in from US Cellular, they presented us with a two-year service agreement that will reduce the cost of each camera from $400 to $50 each. But in order to get the $350 reduction cost in the camera, we have to sign a two-year agreement with US Cellular. And per our purchasing policy, the Board of Commissioners must approve all multi-year contracts. So I'm here to ask you to approve our contract with US Cellular so that we may get a $350 discount on the 10 cameras that were purchased.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second on the contract?
Second, but I'm scared.
At a second.
I got a question.
Yes. What, two-year contract, question went right out of my head, so I'll ask my second question. The people at the roll-offs do not collect money from anybody, right?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right.
No, sir.
I'll think of my other question.
Who monitors this video and, is it monitored live?
It is not monitored. It is more that it will be.
Historical.
It's historical, and that we will be able to access it if needed to be, and to know that, that, that the sites are being monitored.
So you're.
And as, I recall, that is something that the Commissioners asked us to do, and therefore that was included in the budget and it was approved.
I remember my question. All right. Who's going to install this and what is that going to cost?
They're actually, we're not 100% who yet, because each site has, will have a different location, but they're very simple. It's something that actually, county maintenance with, perhaps, we may need to get a local electrician to just pull some power, but they're very, the cameras are about the size of my fist. So it has the camera, and then there's a solar panel that powers the panel. So there's different, so it's, the installation is very, very minor, which is one of the reasons why we went with the cellular option.
How long is the storage? What is the timeframe? Because some of these systems have seven days and then they start recording over.
No, it's longer than that, and I apologize. Wes told me what that was, but I do not remember. I want to think it's more along the lines of a month, but it's, it's longer than what some of the smaller residential home systems have.
Is this going to be?
Make sure of that.
Motion activated?
I don't know.
Otherwise, that's a ton of data.
Ton of data, right. And, and I apologize, Wes is, is on vacation this week, or else he would be presenting this, and he worked on the details of that. But he worked with EIS and he worked with US Cellular regarding what specifically needed, and they felt that this would, would be what was needed. And I would think that's how the cameras are set up in the county buildings, or motion activated? So that, that is what I would assume, although I try not to assume, but I think that is the case.
Okay, no other comment, question? All those in favor of the two-year contract, raise your right hand. Those opposed, I guess we had unanimous. Your last item is the.
Yes, sir.
NC DOT encroachment agreements.
Yes, sir, talking about NC DOT once again. NC DOT allows utilities to, or, excuse me, an encroachment agreement is required for the installation of new utilities and non-utility facilities within an NC DOT right-of-way. That's a mouthful, but basically, if you are installing anything in an NC DOT right-of-way, you have to get permission from NC DOT to do that. And their method of doing that is through an encroachment agreement. NC DOT has, allows utilities to submit a blanket encroachment agreement for routine utility service connections to customers of non-DOT property adjacent to the right-of-way. This is something that utilities have in place. Beaufort County Water, we have looked through our records, NC DOT has looked through their records, and we have been unable to locate a current blanket encroachment agreement that Beaufort County Water has. We have multiple encroachment agreements for many, many projects that we have done throughout the years, but we do not see a blanket encroachment agreement. So what I have presented to you today is a blanket encroachment agreement which would cover all of our installations of our typical service connections. This would be in the majority of the roads in Beaufort County, other than the controlled-access roads, which is basically Highway 17. It has the fencing on the sides, so those are either limited control or controlled access. So the blanket encroachment agreement applies to many of the services that are installed. However, it does not apply to services that are installed by horizontal directional drill or within a controlled-access highway. Those installations will require an additional submission using either a Form 16.1 or 16.2, which those are also included in your agenda book. Because of the routine nature, the frequency, and the occasional urgency of these installations, staff requests the authority to submit other encroachment agreements on behalf of Beaufort County Water as required. So again, the, the blanket encroachment agreements will, I presented those to the, the Board for your approval, because that is something that is, covers, again, the majority of our installations on the majority of the roadways. But then there will be other encroachment agreements that will be required. But then there will be other encroachment agreements that will be required for individual services. If someone comes in and wants a new service on Highway 264 near, just near the Yatesville Convenience Site, we would, that would be installed by directional drill because of the traffic count of that roadway, and so we would do an encroachment agreement at that point for that service. So that's what I'm asking that staff be allowed to complete these encroachment agreements and submit them to DOT per their online program. And this is, it's a change and not a change, but it's something that we have found that we want to clean up our process. We've met with the local DOT representatives, and we're just trying to clean up how we are doing things.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. No other questions? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
All right, we're down to the finance report. Anita?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start off with a quick update on the finance report on the revenue side. You'll have in front of you a legal sheet of paper with the sales tax numbers there at the bottom. We have received our June distribution. We've received the information for the June distribution. We'll actually receive the funds the middle of this month. But that, you'll see there highlighted in yellow, we anticipate receiving $1.13 million the middle of this month for the June collections. That is an all-time high for us. Looking back, we've got the spreadsheet going back about eight or nine years, and that's the largest sales tax distribution we've ever experienced. So with that being said, that concludes our collections for sales tax for fiscal year 2021. We'll wrap the year up with a collection, total collection of 11.668 million, and that compares to 10.232 million in the previous year. So we did experience growth of 1.4 million in our sales tax year-over-year, and that equates to 14, a little over 14% in growth. So everything related to sales tax still looks very promising, very good. You know, Brian and I have been talking about it a little bit, and, you know, just don't know how long it's going to last, don't think it'll last forever, but I guess we'll ride the wave as long as we can. Just really think those numbers are kind of inflated for various reasons. You've got the stimulus funds that have been pushed into the economy. You've got the extra unemployment benefits, which just expired what, this past weekend? You have people going out there buying boats and RVs and things like that. So, you know, we don't think that can continue forever. So we'll expect, I think, sales tax to level off at some point, just not sure when that'll happen. So any questions about sales tax? Okay, moving on, you have another handout in front of you. It is the year-to-date budget report. And of course, we're only two months into the fiscal year, so not a lot of information to share. We'll highlight, the very first number there is a revenue number. It's the Avalorum tax revenue number. You can see that third column, year-to-date, we've actually collected right at $2.2 million already, and that would just be in the last three weeks because bills were just sent out, I think it was about the 10th of August. So just in about three weeks, we've been able to collect about 5.8% of the levy amount. And as I've told you many times before, most people do wait until November and December to pay that tax bill. Moving on down, I mean, nothing really jumps out at me on the expenditure side. In total, when I look at the total expenditures for all departments compared to the appropriated number, we're 15% spent through August 31st, which is exactly where I would expect to be, because two months expenditures, if you annualize it, is about 16%. So that seems pretty much in line with what I would expect there. Any specific questions about the county financial report?
Any question?
Just a procedural question. We paid to the school district and the college 1/12 each month?
Yes, we do.
Is that right?
So if you do look back on, let me just direct you to where-
It's on the second page, Don.
Yes, the second page, a little more than halfway down there. No, actually, it's near the bottom. It's about five up from the bottom. You'll see the far-right column percentage is 16.7%. That would be two months allocations to the public schools and the college there. The 2.717 million and the 583,000. That's two months more.
Right.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Any other question? I'm assuming, going back to the sales tax, you know, based on conversation with a lot of people, I think construction, new construction, as well as a lot of, you know, updating and a lot of real estate activity, there's some sales taxes being generated there on the materials. That's probably pushing that number.
Definitely seen a lot of activity or a huge increase in the excise tax, which is the sale of new homes or existing homes. And I do agree with you, when I was doing some research and pulling some information together for the bond refinancings, I had to look in-depth at the permits that were issued through inspections, and we had issued a lot of renovation permits. I do agree with what you just said, Chairman.
All right, let's address under the consent, item number two. That's on page eight in your book. Okay, what my question is with this, is this amount of money, some half a million dollars or so, is expenditures that will be taken against last year's budget. Is that correct?
So when you have an annual operating budget such as the general fund, so we basically work with two different types of budgets. We have an annual operating budget, which would be your general fund, your water fund, your solid waste fund. And then we have capital project budgets, which are multi-year budgets. So those capital project budgets, those multi-year budgets, they extend and carry over year after year after year for the life of the project. Those annual budgets, they expire at June 30th. So at June 30th at midnight for the general fund, the water fund, and the solid waste fund, that money goes away. Now here's the problem. We have folks, particularly during the COVID event, and that's why we have so many purchase orders we need to bring forward, who have ordered materials, they've ordered vehicles, they've ordered supplies, and they ordered them, they may have ordered them nine months before the end of the fiscal year, but because of the backlog with the supply chain, those products were not delivered and did not come in until after year-end. A good example are the sheriff's vehicles. They were allotted funding for four vehicles last fiscal year. They were ordered in September of 2020. They did not come in until July last month, or a month and a half ago. So the funding resided in last year's budget to purchase them, but they were paid out of the new year. So we really need to bring that funding that rolled into fund balance forward to pay that vendor for those cars in the new year.
So actually, this doesn't show up in any budget. It's a reduction in fund balance.
It's a, we will take it out of fund balance and appropriate to the department for spending, so it does show up in this year's budget.
Yeah, for those of you that are out there that have to do business accounting, government accounting is not like normal accounting, and that's my point in this. Holding over these invoices is something that I've talked about for the last two or three years. The more I talk about it, the worse it gets. And so we need to find a way to resolve this if we have purchase orders outstanding at the end of the year. That needs to be included in the coming year's budget, because you're reducing fund balance, and you're making the public believe one thing is going on while something else actually is. It's a way of covering up expense, not deliberate, but it still does not accurately report expense.
So if I could just respond to that?
Sure.
Oh, thank you. So if we had a crystal ball, when we're developing the budget back in March and April, we maybe could try to anticipate what would not come in by June 30th? So for example, if we're putting together the budget, the manager and I, in March and April, I would have no way of knowing that the sheriff's office vehicles that they ordered in September would not get here before June 30th. I would have expected that they would have. So that's why we have to kind of do it in hindsight, and it's kind of like having outstanding checks. All of you are familiar with reconciling your bank statement. You write a check at the very end of the month, and wouldn't it be a wonderful thing if it could clear your bank, you could get your statement, and there would be, you know, nothing reconciling between the months, or be no timing issues? But this is purely a timing issue, you know? It just carries forward to another period. So we've got to get everything back in the same period. We've got to have the budget in the same period that we're paying the vendor, and this is really the only way I know how to accomplish this. I wish there was a better way.
My point is, we ask about holdovers when we're doing the budget, and we're told, whatever. And then we come up with this. This expense should show up in either last year's budget or this year's budget, one of the two. Because if you go into industry and try this, guess what? You'll go to prison.
It shows up in this year's budget.
No, it doesn't. You just told me it's a reduction in fund balance.
It's not a reduction in fund balance, so if they did not spend that appropriated money in prior year, those surplus funds rolled into fund balance and increased our fund balance. And now we're coming back to you and saying, that money that got put back into fund balance, we need to take it out and pay those vendors. So it's a wash. It's a net zero.
I'm going to stand by what I've been saying all along. This is not good accounting practice. Well, I want to say the same thing that we say every year, is that probably you need to go to community college and take an accounting course, maybe you'd understand it. At the very top of the page, at the very top of the page, it says, "Fund balance appropriated, 468,492." At the end of the year, that amount of money goes into the fund balance, it goes up. And what we're doing now is we're pulling it down by the same amount of money. There is no mucky and no problems with the numbers.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I make just one comment. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but previously, this was not done at the county. I understand that before I came, it was not done, but I also understand that the county had 13 audit findings before I came. And there are zero audit findings for the last four years. And the reason is because there's a certain way to do it. I'm a certified finance officer in North Carolina. I understand the right way to do it, and I believe this is action that needs to be taken tonight, so we do not have any audit findings.
I'll go back and address that, what both of you have said for a minute. Number one, are we running the county on a budget? Are we running the county out of the fund balance? Are we running the county out of both, depending on which is convenient that day? Because this is phony baloney accounting.
Mr. Chairman, it, you know, we do this every year. Commissioner Richardson has these comments every year.
He forgets, Brian.
And the issue, the issue is, we are following the Local Government Physical Control Act, the law that the General Assembly put in place on how we handle finances, and it's done correctly. Once we issue a purchase order, we have an obligation to pay those vendors, and we are simply rolling it to the next year. So it is all done appropriately. Every county, every municipality, and the state of North Carolina does it the exact same way.
I guess what would make it real simple is if we wrote checks, and we sent it to everybody before the end of the year, and letting them hold the money until we get the cars and we get the improvements on the bill. Can't do that. We're not talking about a mill hand running his monthly account. We're talking about running an accounting system, and you guys got two accounting systems going, any way that you look at it. All right, all right.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor? The budget amendment.
Oh, the budget amendment.
You pulled it out.
Yeah, we got to vote on it. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? That was six to one, right? Okay, let's see, was there another item that- Go to page 23. I've had this, I've had this problem with the way we write purchase orders for some time, and it's not the way purchase orders are written, and you can argue with me as long as you want to. If you're ordering 4,000 lunches to be prepared, under quantity, do you put one or 4,000? See, purchase orders in Beaufort County are written, if, this is for $97,700 for lunches to be prepared by Vida. According to this purchase order, we're buying one lunch. I'm assuming it's one contract, right? Is that what the one would be for? It's not the way that you do purchase orders. You refer to the contract in the purchase order if you want to, and you say how many of whatever it is you're buying.
I don't necessarily disagree with you this time. I do think that would be a better presentation. However, you know, when this is entered by the department, and they chose to enter as a contract total and not show the number of meals, and it's acceptable, it passes the test, but I agree with you, more information is always better, and the quantity stated would have been good.
Yeah, you're the finance officer, you got control of this, you signed this, so, you know, don't sign them if they're not right.
Duly noted. Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the purchase order.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay. Item number 11. I've got a question on item 11. Who put this on the, well, let me turn on my count, my thing. Start over. I've got a question on item 11. Who put this on the consent agenda?
That would have been me, sir. The reason that it was put on the consent agenda was because we did the straw vote via email, and I did receive four affirmatives to approving this.
Who asked for the straw vote?
Actually, it was, the judge asked if we could do that, and because it was time-sensitive, that's what was done, was I sent an email out asking if that, if you guys would approve this resolution prior to this meeting, and I received four affirmatives.
I, you know, I normally try to cooperate on straw votes, but I'm about to decide that I don't need to be cooperating on straw votes, because this thing should never have appeared on our agenda at all. Yes, Stan?
Probably the thing we should do is have an emergency meeting. Well, you know, you can deal in the back room, or you can deal in sunshine. Yeah, I think that's the way to do it. I think all votes should be done in public.
Jerry?
Well, and I'll chime in on this, because Judge Parker called me, and then I, in turn, called the manager and told him what the situation was. It was a vote that needed to be done then, because the legislature was going to vote the following day.
Right, you've answered my question. That was the answer I was looking for. All right, and I have to say that Ed and I, we were at the conference in Wilmington when this came about. Need a motion?
It's done, so move.
All right, add a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. All right, Brian, I think we've got all the items for consent, and we're down to yours.
Mr. Chairman, I need to do the podium, just because I need to show you something as we talk about broadband. This was a request, actually, Mr. Rep. Holt asked that we give an update on where we stood with broadband. I think Marshall's going to catch that.
Okay, so, wanted to talk to you a little about where we are with discussions on broadband. We have had conversations with River Street, the partner that you have the MOU with, and where they stand is, they are looking at the area, continuing to look at the area. And I'll show you one of the challenges that we've run into. And it's based on, there is currently a bill in the General Assembly that modifies the Great Grant, which is the program for broadband. And essentially, when the board looked at that, you said, "We're going to set aside $4 million of your stimulus money or your ARPA money to match up hopefully against a Great Grant," because they will go up to $4 million. Well, the Great Grant is still in committee, still being worked on, so we're still waiting to understand what all that means. We have a general idea of what it means. We know that it may be a match of up to $4 million, but some of the language in there also reads that you can't apply, or a Great Grant is not applicable in areas where there has been ARDOF funded. Now, the ARDOF was the Rural Development Rule, Rule, oh shit, Opportunity Fund, Rural Development Opportunity Fund. It's related, what the federal government did was, they went back and they looked at areas where there was either unserved or underserved areas, and they broke it out by census tracts. And then they auctioned that money off. You remember, we talked a little bit about it, Greg talked to you about it as well. It was a reverse auction, where they started at a certain number, and all the players were in, and then they reduced the number and said, "Can you do it for 90%? Can you do it for 80%? Can you do it for 70%?" And it went down and down and down. So there were some entities that received ARDOF money in Beaufort County. One of those was SpaceX, one from satellite, and then CCO Holdings, which is charter. So the challenge that we run into, and this is the map from, from the federal government, so what we'll do is zoom in, and you'll see the challenge that we have. So there's, there's Beaufort County generally in this area. And I'm going to turn on the winning, the ARDOF winners. So you'll see, the, the blue areas or the green areas are charter funding. The orange areas are SpaceX funding. So here, I'll zoom in a little bit so you look at the north side of the river. So here's the north side of the river. All right, so come in a little bit, there's Old Ford, couple of areas over here, most of this area is open, the Pine Town area, some of that is already served. This is the area, Commissioner Waters, I was talking to you about earlier, I think that's, that's the line, that's the Washington County line. So this is up there in, in that area. But that's an area that, that CCO Holdings or charter won money. So then if you move, you know, then there are little areas like here, SpaceX won money to be able to provide service there, and right there in Bunyan. So this is the challenge we run into that. Look at the south side of the river. So the south side of the river, this is where funding for charter has been provided to provide broadband services on the south side of the river. It's a patchwork. They are supposed to provide that, they're still in the long form, which is my understanding, is they're still showing to the federal government or to, to the FCC that they can do it, how they're going to do it, and confirming their bids. And they have like four years, I think, to provide the service in those areas. The challenge that we run into on the south side of the river with, with River Street is that you can't, the way the current legislation is written, you can't get a Great Grant and cross into ARDOF-funded areas. So they're looking at, how can they pick their way through here to get a backbone on the south side of the river that serves those folks that are not going to be served by charter? So that's the challenge we're running into. They're, they're aware of that, their engineers are looking at it, trying to figure something out, because that's the challenge that we run into. Now, the north side of the river's not that big a deal. But that, that is the issue that causes us a little bit of concern, in that we don't know when these are going to get built out. The fine for, my understanding is, each census block or each census track block, I believe, that if you were a vendor and you won that track, and you decided, nah, I thought I could do it for 10% of the money, but I really can't. You pay a $400 fine. So we don't know, and we won't know probably until later in the fall, until final contracts get signed, whether CCO Holdings is actually going to do this or not. So we do have some time, but we're waiting to see. So if the language stays in there in the General Assembly, that you can't cross areas or can't go through areas that have already received ARDOF funding, then we've got a challenge on the south side of the river.
Can it run down the river? In the river?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'd just like to point out, there's nobody in most of those areas.
Where, where those light up?
Look what's on the south side of the river, PCS phosphate lines and mining operations and agriculture. I was familiar with this county as anybody. There's nobody in these places. The other one up on the north side up there was the Terracilla Farming Community. Thousands and thousands of acres of farmland that there'll never be a house in. This, this is all, this is all a waste of the taxpayers' money.
Brian, on, on the, on the north side, all of that big wide area is currently River Street.
That area?
Yes, yes.
So this is, like I say, this is ARDOF funding, and this is the challenge that they've seen in, across all areas, because they, the federal government threw out a broad scope of money, and, and they had the big corporations come in and grab areas, because they could afford to take it to lower levels.
Is this restriction on going through an ARDOF-funded area, is that federal or state?
That's the state money. That's the Great Grant.
Because it was my understanding that was going to go away.
Well, actually, it wasn't in there to start with, and it got put in there. And, and being cynical from my side, I think the reason it got put in there was the large, the big companies wanted to be able to, to exit out. They wanted to be able to control it. Now, that's just me being a little cynical on it. But I, I, you know, we kind of played in this realm for a while, and nobody wanted to talk to us until we had money, except for River Street. River Street talked to us from day one, and were willing to do whatever it took to help provide service to underserved and underserved areas. And then nobody else wanted to talk to us. But lo and behold, once we got money, then folks wanted to talk to us. It's kind of like, who brought you to the dance? So I think these, my opinions don't matter. We'll see what the legislation looks like.
So the next step's just to wait on legislation?
Well, yes, sir. Because we don't know what's going to happen until that, until that bill gets passed through and is approved. We won't know whether it's still $4 million or whether, or what it is. Right now, we kind of know, I mean, the bill's out there, but we don't know what the final, what the final look is.
Brian, you, you mentioned to me earlier that they felt like they could serve 4,000 people?
No, no, that was, that was, that was Suddenlink.
Suddenlink.
Yeah, I got a, I got a note from Suddenlink the other day that said, "We're working on some, some build-out programs. We think we can serve about 4,000 homes. We'd like to talk to you if you've got some money." I said, "Well, certainly, we're happy to talk to anybody."
So that's probably within the city limits of Washington.
I don't know where that is. I haven't seen that, hadn't seen that map yet, but certainly it's something that we'll take a look at and bring to y'all and.
I think we'd be turd and feathered if we went to Suddenlink.
Well, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and what I also.
They're building out, they need to get out.
Well, I mean, what, what I'll tell you is, and we've had that conversation with our current provider, with, with River Street, and just to tell you what, what, what a good group of folks they are. In, in my conversations with Greg, you know, he said, "We would, our mission is to serve unserved and underserved areas, and if we can help do that, we will do that. But if us being in the market and helping drive other players into the market gets broadband services in other areas, we're happy." So they're, they're willing to help in any way they can. And it's just, it's there, it just says a lot about their company, I think.
For the fun of it, ask them about running it down the river under sea cable or whatever. I mean.
Well, you have too much cost.
That's too expensive. That's too expensive. Brian, you want to go to the next item?
Yes, sir.
On the Bell Haven, and I want to comment on this, on what we're talking about here.
Go ahead. Look, everybody knows that I'm against this broadband project from the get-go. Listen to what's going on in Australia right now with broadband. They're locked in their homes. They are required daily to, to get online and report in. The people they're reporting to, their face has to be on the screen, are using facial recognition to verify that who is reporting is reporting. Now, this whole broadband mess came out of the Obama administration, is passed on to the rest of these administrations. Everybody wants it. They are wanting this for surveillance. You really need to stop and think about where this is going, because it's going to go into places that the public doesn't want.
Okay, Brian, you want to go into the Bell Haven and the North Carolina Wildlife Boat and Rent?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the board will recall, a regular meeting on April the 5th, you approved, unanimously approved a two-year option agreement for the county property in Bell Haven that consists of, of the area that the Wildlife Resources Commission originally wanted to put a boat landing that we had had conversation with them with, about. You recall that, that project essentially fell apart. You approved at this, at the April 5th meeting to provide an option to the town of Bell Haven, because they were working with wildlife, trying to get the grant opportunity and get a commitment from wildlife. Well, you have on page 472, a letter from Gary Gardner, who is the chief of their engineering division for North Carolina Wildlife Resources, that says they are committing to, to construct the access area at the Cooper's Track, assuming all needed permitting can be obtained, and the costs of the project are reasonable based on the initial estimates. So what they now need is ownership of that property, because according to wildlife, they need for it to be in Bell Haven's name as they start pulling permits. So Bell Haven has requested, and our recommendation to you is, that under General Statute 168, 274, you transfer that property to Bell Haven, the same, the same property that you had originally optioned to them, so that they can now work with wildlife to construct that boat landing.
You've, you've heard the recommendation. Comments?
I have a comment. Bell Haven came in and wanted control of property initially, so that they could work on development of the property. And I thought, for commercial purposes, maybe everybody else thought different, because there's already one boat landing that wildlife has in Bell Haven, and others in the area that people can use. What we're building is something that's going to be very little used, and that the higher and best use for that property is not for a boat ramp. So I'm not going to support this.
Two things. Have you ever put a boat in on the current ramp?
I've never put a boat in anywhere.
Okay, well then, clearly you don't understand that that, that ramp's a total wreck. Number two is, the property pretty much floods a lot anyways that we're talking about here. So it can't be used for commercial.
That's not true.
Yeah, there, there is property close to the railroad that can be used for retail purpose. If we do what the recommendation is, then, you know, we don't know what's going to go on the rest of it. We know that roughly 11 acres is going to be where the wildlife has that. But if it falls through, you know, we don't have any recourse, so.
Is there any way we're just doing the development? Is that what they want to build the ramp? We got to move across that thing. And hold on to the combustion?
Well, I mean, I just want to make sure everybody understands that, you know, we're giving up any kind of control of what might go on the rest of it. But, you know, it is within the city limits of Bell Haven, so.
This does not include the Tillman Track, that we call the Tillman Track on the other side of the gut. So this is just the area where we originally were looking at putting a wildlife ramp and including the area. It would also allow the town of Bell Haven to connect, you know, the thought, the thought we had originally was to put the boat landing in, and then get some grants to put a dockage along the side and some, and some, some boardwalk that would connect back to their ramp, their, their boating area. So this would give them that opportunity to develop that property, and, and like you said, it is in their jurisdiction, and I don't want to cut grants out there.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second? I'll, I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? We're down to item number three, the Architect Services. Brian?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. At the jail committee meeting on August the 25th, the committee discussed possible jail modifications with Architect Earl Warren. Mr. Warren has done some work for many years with the county relating to the jail. He helped design back several years ago, the first addition, the first expansion, and then he helped us with the additional work related to some issues that were, that were discovered later in the old section. The committee has talked to him about, is there some opportunities for modifications to the existing facility, to, to be able to expand it or, and do things like HVAC work that would be, that would be eligible under ARPA funding related to COVID, so that you could provide some additional isolation, provide some additional HVAC, isolated areas that would have some different containment in order to try to make that area safer as it, as it relates to COVID or other future communicable disease issues. So he is, he, he put together a, a brief sketch, I think I shared that with the board, on what he thought could be done. Obviously, this is a long-term project, and this would take a lot of work, and we'd have to get the blessings of DHHS who managed that, those jail plans and things. So this is just a starting point, but he agreed to continue to work with us. You have his letter of engagement with a $12,000 retainer, which he would bill against at his hourly rate of $150, to look at, to try to flesh out some of these opportunities as, as we move forward. So our recommendation to you would to be, would be to move forward with that. You can use the funds that we've requested, the $12,000 retainer. That is eligible under ARPA funding, because it is planning, it would be planning money related to issues for COVID.
You've heard the recommendation. Could I have a motion to approve the engagement letter and retainer fee?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. 2021 Urgent Repair Program Policies. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you recall, at the February 1st meeting, the board approved seeking funding from the Housing Finance Administration, and this is for the 2021 Urgent Repair Program called U R P 21. The board said that if it was awarded, they would provide a $10,000 match to the $100,000. And we currently have the Wooton Company who's doing that workforce under the 20, under U R P A 20. So we were awarded those funds. You have the policies that are associated with that. One is the assistance policy that essentially determines, there is a, there's a point category. So you'll see that there are higher points given to elderly folks, veterans, disabled, and that is the process by which they go through to be eligible for this program, and how we rank them out to see who qualifies. Obviously, there's not a lot of money associated with this. It's 10,000, it's $100,000 for 10 homes, so it's $10,000 a home, but it's to make urgent repairs, safe sanitary housing for folks that need that. So you have the procurement and distribution policy, and you have the assistance policy. Both of these policies have been approved by Housing Finance Administration and are now come to you for approval, so that we can move forward with the program.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion? All, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right, the next item is September 11th Resolution. As you're well aware, on Saturday, we will have the 20th anniversary of September the When we lost men and women in New York, Washington DC, and also in the state of Pennsylvania, a lot of fire department employees, a lot of first responders received personal injuries and died. And I think it's appropriate that we pass the resolution, and I will not read it, but I'll make a motion to, that we approve the September 11th Resolution of Remembrance. All right? All those in favor of the resolution, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're down to the jail committee update. John?
I just wanted to update everybody on the August 25th jail committee. There were two items that were discussed. The first is our request to the Department of Justice Jail Divisions for an evaluation of the jail on August 6, 17th. I emailed Michael Jackson at the DOJ on the. I emailed Michael Jackson at the DOJ on the status of the sheriff's request to review our jail. The next day, he emailed me indicating that he had not received the request, but then later that day, he called me and indicated that his boss would like to meet with Sheriff Coleman and that he was vacationing conveniently on the Outer Banks. So that meeting took place on that Friday and it, it went very well. He, the chief emailed me back that he indicated that he would support the coming in and doing the evaluation, but the hiccup here is that they're not giving us any dates because they're on non-travel status, I guess unless you're on vacation. And so they don't have a way of giving us a date at this time as to when they'll be able to come in. So that was as far as that went.
I want a comment. As was the case when the last jail study was done, I want to be notified of the visits of all federal officials so that I can sit in those meetings.
They actually, they actually demand that you be there. Okay.
That's good.
So.
All commissioners.
All commissioners. Well, you won't be there? Can you send the surrogate? Okay. Then I think we've already covered this. The second part of the meeting was when Earl Warren gave the proposal on what he saw could potentially happen in the jail to meet the two requests that we had, which was to increase space and to allow for isolation in case of some sort of an outbreak. He proposed that we use the two bottom sections, one that is right now being used by the clerk of the court, the other one being used by the register of deeds, which is virtually empty anyways. And so the next steps now are to start talking to them about the potential of doing that. Our request to him was, can we do something using the American Relief Funds in the jail that would, that would be, that would meet these needs? And so he proposed that. I think we all felt pretty comfortable with that being the very first step in a long process, as Brian talked about. So the next steps will be when, next steps will determine when DOJ can come in and do the evaluation and then setting down with the recorder of deeds and the clerk to understand what their needs are moving forward. By the way, so the, the audience out there, the Jail Committee is, is live, streamed live and it's recorded, so it's on the, the website if you want to see it.
You want to go to your next item on the information?
Sure. Each month, we receive this packet, which is, I mean, it's fairly extensive. It, I don't know how many pages it is, but it's probably 40, done both sides in color. And to date, after, I've, I've been here just 22 months, the only thing we, I've ever heard anybody talk about is the first 10 or 12 pages, which relates to the jail and the inmates. I don't know what the rest of it is, what value the rest of it gives us, and I, but I do know that it's got to be costing somebody a lot of time and money to put all this together, including the trees we're killing. So.
One page? Take a lot of time, take one page?
Yeah. One page? No, it's a lot more than one pages. So I'm sure, I'm sure at some point, somebody asked for these, but I don't know what the value of them is.
Well, I can, I can answer that for my less experienced commissioner. I've been here 26 years. John's been here a couple of years. There's a lot of information in here that's useful to a commissioner about what's going on in Beaufort County. The inmate list has served this county very well, talked to the DA regularly about the inmate list, and we have one inmate that's been in there for three years. You would never know that unless you got this list.
I don't disagree about that.
You can determine the turnover in the jail from this list. The Veterans Monthly Compensation Award Table, I wasn't even aware of that. That popped up here two, three months ago and that, that's a good thing. That's more information that's, that's useful. The Real and Personal Property Collections, that keeps the commissioner up to date on how things are going. A lot of information in there about what's going on if you look at it. The list of proceeds given to ZLS with attorney fees, I've got to study that one. That's something, oh, okay, that's ZACIS. ZACIS. I don't, I don't like acronyms. We got an alphabet, spell it. With attorney fees, that tells us what ZACIS is doing. The commissioner can take a look at this and see how our tax collections are being managed and that is, are we going after the big boys that owe us money? What about the smaller accounts? You can take a look at those, see what's worth collecting, not worth collecting. It's, it's a lot of information. The top 50 delinquent taxpayers, that's a really an interesting piece of paper because I know a lot of people that are on that list and you would think they could pay their taxes. So, you know, one of the things I was going to propose is that we put a committee together to work with Win Kenyon on this so that we can get aggressive about this list of 50 because there are a lot of people on here that ought to be paying their taxes that are not. So that tells you a lot about what's going on in Beaufort County. People that you wouldn't expect are not paying their taxes. Current county-owned property available for upset bid, that's useful. People are always coming around wanting to know about this and you say, go to the list, there's nothing on the list now or whatever. That helps us move that property. The Environmental Health List, I don't look at it as much as I used to, but this tells us about restaurant inspections, when they're being done, how many are being done, onsite water project program, multifunctioning systems report, there's a lot of different septic systems. It tells you how hard the Department of Health is working if you take a look at it and study it a little bit. And then the last one that I want on there that I've been asking for, and the chief deputy is here, is ankle bracelet report. I would like to, I'll make a motion that we, that this be included in this monthly report so that we can see who and how many people are out on ankle bracelets. Do I hear a second? Your second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All right, discussion on the ankle bracelet report.
Can we back up?
Yes.
The original reason for bringing this up is that, as I said, 22 months, nobody's talked about anything except for the jails, the list of inmates, and so.
I, I might not talk to it at a meeting, but I've visited, I've visited the tax office pretty often. Some of our constituents have been on the ZACIS list, the house was in foreclosure, we saw it, and we, we talked to them and they paid up their taxes. So, I mean, we didn't discuss it here and the only thing I want to, want you to understand, my name hadn't been on the list, but I still want it up there.
Well, I just want to make sure that there's a benefit in doing all this.
Would it help to email us? Is it, is it security reasons we print this? No? We can email it?
I don't.
Richardson, would you be okay with email?
I like getting it in my book. Old dude with hard copies means something to me.
Maybe, maybe if we get a presentation from the health department then on all this environmental stuff, that we'd have some understanding of what it means. No, because there's no value to it, right?
It might not be none of you, John, but that, the people that's not you to let them have, if you don't want it, leave it on Katie's desk.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to add.
I got one thing to say.
Well, we, we got a motion and then we'll go to that, or is it pertaining to the motion?
Yeah, we have a motion. Okay. So basically, why can't we bifurcate the, the way you receive it? Hood likes paper. I would, I would like to have it digitally. It would, I mean, you want to go digital, maybe we can have a show of hands or just talk to Katie, as I'm doing now, as you're doing now, and determine which way we want to go, digital or hard copy. Killed trees. Just tell her. You know, I'm concerned with how many trees have to die as well. I'm not.
Katie, put me down for the hard copy. I'm like Hood. If we're going to have it, I'd rather have it in my book.
One thing about the, the tree thing, trees have to die so that other trees can get larger. That's just the way it is.
All right, we got a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on ankle bracelet report?
I just want a question on it. I mean, I have a problem. What Commissioner just asked him for, is that legal that you can put in? Okay.
All right. Any, any discussion? All those in favor of the ankle bracelet report, raise your right hand.
That didn't work as well as I thought. We started taking stress. Well, I.
I didn't think if I was reading.
All right, all right. Gentlemen.
It's just an informational report.
We're, we're down to Hood's items. You want, the first one is the sheriff's office. We've already handled the ankle bracelet.
I think he's going to answer most of this. The ankle bracelet report's been answered and the only reason the criminal and civil contacts report's on here, Charlie and I are talking about this and I don't know where we are, so he, he'll probably tell us and whatever he tells us will be fine. Oh, and I have one more item under this to ask the chief deputy about too, when he finishes with his presentation.
So it's been passed around, responses for the pretrial release that you've asked about, and then still, I guess, something to maybe try to get something started on the discussion on the civil criminal contacts and some of the other information that we've had. In between last commissioners meeting and this commissioners meeting, I had a conversation with Commissioner Richardson in his office where I took the report that he's referenced to several times from Gaston County, asked him sort of to sort through the fluff of that report and get down to the information that he really wants and needs. I am still working on that. I'm working on that with the folks from Gaston County that put that report together and through Motorola slash Summit, who is, we do our operating system from, because any data that goes in, we'll just have to figure out through crystal reports or something else, how to grab and extract that to turn it into a report. So it is going to take a little time to put all that together, but I am working on that. The pretrial release, PTR has been affected by COVID, just like everything else with inmates. I will remind all the commissioners that every inmate that we have, that we've seen that we're going to keep, you know, anybody who stays in the jail for, you know, anywhere from three to five days on, you know, anything that would be considered a, you know, pretty serious charge, that it looks like they're not going to be able to make bond for whatever reason. Paperwork goes before the judges and at this particular point in time, there's Judge Parker who looks at the applications for our PTR interests and ultimately makes a determination of who we have and, and who goes on pretrial release. So everybody that we keep goes through that and then at its high point, we would have anywhere from 12 to 14. That was, you know, 2019, 2020. And then recently, over the last year and a half, with the reduction in inmates because of COVID, and those numbers have gone down as well. So right now, four are on that list. We might go up to six, we might go down to two. In the meantime, technology has changed, so we actually have better stuff that, that we are using on the pretrial release, that we can do more things as far as geo-fencing and GPS tracking and things like that. So the, the program is going on and getting better, it's just right now we have less people than we have in the past. And any questions about that, I'll try to, try to answer. The other sheet, that is an internal document that we've had at the sheriff's office for many, many, many years. Back when I started in '04, we had a document, I don't know if there was anything that was like that when Commissioner Langley was there or not, but as you see here, you'll see a number that's under the civil column is civil papers. We have changed that over the past where it was any civil paper that was returned was, was listed now over the last handful of years, we just do the ones that are returned served because there is a difference. And not, not every civil paper is going to be served. Somebody takes out a civil paper and that address is a Washington address, but they live in Mobile Home Park that has a Washington address, but it's in Pitt County, we can't serve that paper. So we have to return it unserved. That paper would get forwarded to the Pitt County Clerk's Office and then it could be served by Pitt County deputies. So just, just get that out there. So mainly for the public consumption is, is that every paper that isn't returned served does not mean that that is a failure of the process. That means that it has gone through its process and it was unable to be, the person is unable to be found, person is unable to be found in the county, or maybe the, the issue that was brought forth, the paper in the first place was resolved before we got it served. Criminal contacts that you see there, that is going to be specifically for criminal summons served, you know, so not every criminal contact or call is going to be listed that. That's going to be for criminal summons or warrants or magistrate's orders or anything that would affect us taking possession of a person and taking them before a judicial official or issuing them a criminal summons or a paper that says, hey, you've been charged with a misdemeanor and this is your court date. That's what's going to be listed under that column. Calls, pretty self-explanatory, 1089s, those are house checks or area patrols. So anytime that a deputy is, is doing either walking around, pulling on door handles, looking at windows of a house check, or in an area for a designated area patrol, we've had break-ins in an area. We try to get as many cars into that area as many times as we can. We're trying to do a better job of documenting that. We also have over 100 communities in, in Beaufort County that anytime a deputy is not there on a call, but they're riding through, we're trying to do a better job of documenting that for, for the folks, you know, I guess, understanding of what we do and some of the calls that will get us, say, well, I never see a sheriff's deputy's vehicle. Well, a lot of cases, that means that you live in a, in a pretty good area, but it's also a 24-hour day and if you're not looking outside your window that whole time, you might miss that two or three seconds that a car passes by. So, so that's that. And then citations and warnings are pretty self-explanatory. As a sheriff's office, I hope we never get to the point where our numbers really compete with municipalities and the highway patrol when it comes to tickets. I want us to stop as many cars as they do, but I don't want us writing as many tickets as they do, if that makes sense. So, so I think that that, that goes as far as that goes. Any questions on that? And I hope that that is helpful and that's something that I can pretty much get to you monthly until we get a more substantial document.
Charlie, I think this satisfies me for, if we can get this every month in here, that, that'll be very helpful.
I also have one more thing if I can. I know that there was, there was an item that was on the agenda that was earlier discussed. I was here, I stepped out. I, I am. I stepped out to talk to the health director. You know, I, I do feel that, that it is more of a simple issue than a complex issue. It's something that we've, we've had going on since 2016 and I think that if you get the information out or ask the questions, I feel that, that I can answer that to satisfy something and it can unscrew up a problem that we've had for the last month when it comes to how we're treating an employee in a position that they're already in. So I'm just throw it back and, and ask if that can be brought back up in this meeting. That would be greatly beneficial.
Well, the, the motion was tabled, so Hood, I think you made that motion.
Well, I made a motion, but I, and if you want to talk about it tonight, I really don't think we should. I think we should talk about it again next month because Charlie just alluded to something and gave away part of the problem here. He's wanting us to approve money for somebody that's already in a position over there doing something and, you know, this is, this is going to be a contorted thing. Let's bring it back next month.
There's nobody in that position right now, is there?
There is. And there has been for five years.
I thought you said it was vacant.
Well, I, I think that's even more reason to bring it back next month so we can spend the appropriate amount of time on it because I have a concern about this. I have a concern about the amount of pay that this individual is getting and, and on and on it goes. We need to talk about it.
Since it was tabled, we'll stick with the table.
Yes, sir.
All right, next item is, did you want to talk about the vacancies in the?
Well, the vacancies, Charlie, you've got, what, 13 vacancies in here, about six or seven deputy sheriffs. You, you figure?
Figure that you're going to be able to fill, thank you, be able to fill this, these positions fairly quickly or is something going on that we need to know about?
Possibly take a look at the document that you referred.
I can show you the one I have. Katie's got it. Don't fall.
Okay. Can you repeat your question?
Well, the question is, you've got 13 vacancies, that's a lot of vacancies. Is there? Is there, do you plan on filling those fairly soon, and is there something going on that we need to know about?
There are several candidates in the queue for sworn positions. I can't think of any candidates in, for base telecommunicator positions. With the changes that occurred in the last budget, where we are not going to be able to put somebody in the technology specialist position in 911, that just doesn't make any sense under the current numbers that we're carrying. But that is, you know, part of the discussion of, we have, we've had 18 full-time equivalents in communications since 2015-16 budget. That number went down to 16, as we were trying to get numbers to take care of transports of inmates, trying to get that back to 18, so we can have four telecommunications per shift, and then two supervisors, a manager, whatever the county wants to call it, manager, assistant manager, shift supervisor over the shifts in communications, and then three communicators, so four different levels of, of telecommunicator, three supervisor ranks, two of them that actually run the show. So that's, it's been difficult to find communicators, but the ones that we've got recently have been pretty good. Detention has actually been a story that I, I still don't understand how close, how we can stay as close to full in a detention center as we can. That by far is one of the most difficult jobs to recruit for, and then keep people because of the grind every single day. I mean, they go to work in a submarine, but we do have a couple of, of spots in there. Some of that has been because we have tried to make sure that we have changed the supervisor structure to go along with the numbers underneath them, because at one time we were up to 24 in the jail, and now we're back down to 20. So we don't want to make, we don't want to have too much, too many numbers on the supervisory level, when we don't have enough of the folks underneath to cover that, and it's taken some time to change that through attrition. So a lot of words to get to, to what you're saying. We do have openings, we have openings everywhere, we are trying to fill them, we need every one of them and more. Some of the questions that we have been asking, and the help that we have been asking for, for the last handful of years flat out haven't been, have not been addressed, and we're trying to do the best we can with what we have. There was a time at the end of the last budget year where, quite frankly, the morale level and the, the overall happiness of the staff was stressed about as much as it could be when it came time to understanding if somebody was going to have, somebody was going to go, who was going to go, because it wasn't 13 people that were going to be talked about or questioned, it was anybody and everybody in the organization. So we had people that left, and I know that they left prior to that, because they didn't know if they were going to be on the chopping block or not. So we're trying to do the best we can with what we got, but we're still not just hiring warm bodies to fill open positions.
I appreciate you doing that, hiring good people, but I also hear in the street that guys are looking jobs because they scared.
Sure.
Also here in the street, and I don't know how true it is, that guys are leaving the job because they're scared to death. It's not the 13 that, that knew they were leave for SRO officers, it's the one that has happened since they left. And that's what I hear on the street all the time, and whether it's true or not, I don't know.
I, I think that there's some honesty in that, you know, and, you know, I've worked for a sheriff now for almost 18 years, and there's not anybody in this room that understands the, the saying, you work at the pleasure of the sheriff any more than I do. You know, and, you know, so it is tough, and it's tough on everybody, but it's tough on me, you know, but I mean, the, the choices that you have are, is you either choose to go to work and do the job, or you choose not to. And if you choose not to, I mean, I'll just say you how it is. If somebody at the office chooses to, to have the attitude that they come in and they're going to walk around and work with their butt on their shoulders, they're not going to do it very long. We've got to have, we don't have enough people that we can play around. You're going to come in, you need to know your job, you need to do your job. You do your job, we try to benefit, we try to, we try to encourage, we try to entice, we try to pay, we try to train, we try to recruit. But if you come in and think for any time that you can come in and not do the job, then it is, you're, you're on borrowed time.
It's anywhere.
It should be anywhere.
Yeah.
Of those that leave, do you have an exit survey?
Depends on how and why they leave, if their exit, if their information that they give is going to be hated, the chief deputy, because he didn't have enough hair, then there might not be an interview. But if we feel that we can get better by information that we, that we get, then we do that. And I think that there is a, that there is an exit interview that is, that the county tries to provide for folks when they leave the sheriff's office. I don't get the information of who or what they do, and quite honestly, if we get information from that, great, but if not, then I'm fine with that as well.
Thank you, Charlie.
Yes, sir.
Charlie, it would be helpful, you could bring an organization chart on this telecommunications thing next month when you come back.
Sure.
And that, that will help us with our discussions.
Okay. I can, but it's pretty much the board chart that you've had since 2015, 2016.
Now, I want to see the one you're thinking about today.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the job you do every day. Commissioner Richardson, the commissioner of meeting video distribution.
Well, I've been getting, I keep getting telephone calls from people who's saying, when are the last commissioners meeting going up? When is the last commissioners meeting going up? And what I've, from what I, and Mr. Manager, you're certainly welcome to correct me, from what I'm hearing is, basically, we deliver this thing to Suddenlink and whoever else puts it up, and we're kind of at their mercy. And what I want to ask the board to do is appoint me to deal with Suddenlink.
Mr. Chairman, I have some information I'd be glad to provide the board with.
All right. How about doing that before we jump out of here?
So I'm happy for Commissioner Richardson to deal with Suddenlink, anytime you'd like to, I'm very happy for that, but I've had conversations with Brad Ayers, and of course, they are a very large organization, and they move very slowly at times. He is their government affairs person. As you recall, there was an office, a local office in Washington where we used to drop those DVDs off. That office is closed, it no longer exists. The next local office is in Greenville, and I now have contact information to where we can send that DVD to them, and they will put it on, and that is a stop-gap method, until, according to Mr. Ayers, their inside plant technician and systems lead is going to set up a link where we can upload the video. That was a conversation we were having, was, wow, you know, it would be nice not to have to do that, there's technology where we can just upload it to you, we can upload stuff everywhere else, and he says they're working on that to give us a portal to where we can take it, and it would take us a day and a half. What he does need to know is, when would you like those video, when would you like that video shown? I, I can't recall exactly when they normally did it, I know they had a schedule, they dropped it in the DVD player, and it automatically played at certain times. We have those listed on, on the website, where they play for the city of Washington, where they play with River Street, but I don't know where y'all want that one to play. So if y'all could tell me that, I'll be glad to provide that to him, and then once we get the, the upload link, we can certainly, that'll be a lot quicker.
Mr. Chairman, the video's played seven o'clock when, when I did it, but I think it would, and like you said, there's a jail committee meeting. Does that get shown on, or would that get shown? I mean, you're going to be sending them a lot of DVDs, and that's a great idea if they can do it direct download, that's what I was trying to get them to do for years, so...
So currently, we, we send the, we send the commissioners' meetings to the public access folks. We, we don't send the rest, because we livestream that, and actually, we have not been livestreaming the jail committee, because we weren't asked to do that, so we will do that from now on. We have been livestreaming the police committee, because we were asked to do that, so we'll make sure both those are done, but we haven't been sending those DVDs. We've been livestreaming, and we've been posting on the web, so that they can pick them up from there.
Well, we've had such a, we've had a discussion about getting information out, and I know a lot of people do still subscribe to Suddenlink, obviously so, because they complain all, all the time, so this is a good opportunity for the county to put up message boards and whatever, and literally let that thing roll all night long, and just stack them on there and just play it, and if they would do that, but I mean, there are times I can't sleep, and I watch this, I go to sleep, so...
I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Walker. If we can do that, that would solve the problem, and stop my telephone from ringing.
That's what we're moving forward with, is trying to, he says they're going to get us an upload capability. We'll, we'll mail them the DVDs, we'll now have an access point to where we can do that.
Well, you know, I'll withdraw my motion if you think this solves the problem for the time being, we'll see what we look like next month.
I'm happy to let you deal with Suddenlink going forward.
Just, just tell them if they don't handle it, then we're going to send Hood.
That was done, that was done before, and it worked.
They won't be happy when I finish with them.
That was done some time ago, and it was, and it worked.
Okay, Hood, you want to go to the mega sites, ARP funds?
Well, I, I realize the manager keeps telling me, and he may well be right, that, that the mega sites are not in the ARP funds. I just refuse to give up, so I want us to keep trying, keep asking, keep fighting, keep pushing on these mega sites, because I think they fit infrastructure as well as sewage dust, because we're certainly getting rid of waste.
Commissioner Richardson, I've, I've taken both of your requests, the library and the solid waste, I've sent that to the association, to Kevin Leonard, to ask them, he's forwarded that to NACO to try to get an answer there as well. I've sent a request to Treasury. As soon as they tell us something officially, I'd be glad to give it to you, but again, I would still stand on what I've, what I've read before, is it is not eligible.
Yeah, and I've talked, I've talked to the senator's office, and I still don't have an answer either, so...
You want to go right into the public library system?
I think, well, I mean, the, the public library system thing would probably depend on, on whether we can use ARPA funds for this or not, and I understand where the manager is with it, so I don't see any sense in a protracted discussion about that, because when we start discussing public library in Beaufort County, it is a thoroughly contorted thing, and we do not want to get into it tonight, because we'd be here another hour or two talking about it, so I will move on.
All right. You want to, you want to talk about mandated vaccinations?
Well, you know, I, I support vaccinations, I've been vaccinated myself, I think everybody ought to be vaccinated, but by the same token, we have had serious encroachments on our constitutional rights, and I, I move that the Beaufort County Commissioners, while we recommend vaccinations, we do not support mandated vaccinations. That's a motion.
So are you, are you saying that you're opposed to corporations and businesses that requires mandates for their employees?
No, thank you for bringing that up. No, I, businesses can do whatever they want to. I'm against mandated vaccinations by the government, by governments. But corporations and businesses can do whatever they want to, I don't want, I don't want to cross that line, it's their business, that's a part of the Constitution, that's their business, they can run it however they want to.
So you're basically saying for government employees?
Yeah, let me say that again, no, I'm against mandated vaccinations by governments forced onto the general public. Corporations and businesses are not included in that, they can do whatever they want to.
All right. You made a motion?
Yes, sir.
You second?
Second. I'd like to also add that I, I agree with Hood on almost everything he said. While I've been vaccinated, and I jumped at a chance to get a vaccination, and I will, when I'm sure the booster's approved by CDC, and I'm talking about the not political arm of the CDC, but the science arm of the CDC, I'm going to get, I'm going to get the booster myself. Now, the whole idea of vaccinations is, some people want to have their own personal freedom to make their own choice, and I get that, providing they, they have the right kind of job, providing they are not in the military, because if you give yourself to the military, you give your body to the military. I mean, I mean, there's worse things in a vaccination that you're going to face. So I, I agree that the military should, should have to be vaccinated, should the generals and those in charge say so. But Americans have given up so many personal freedoms over the last two years, and I think there's a group that wants us to give up more, so we can lose our, our individual identity, so we will become more of a collective identity. Ergo, we will be closer to Marxism at that point, and that's what a great gang of people are marching towards, whether they know it or not. So I agree, Hood. The vaccine, the mandate vaccination, the mandated vaccinations is a way of achieving that, and however we can help others secure and keep their personal freedoms, I think it's wonderful. Again, I suggest people get the vaccination if they feel called to.
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Hood, you gotta, you gotta look at this thing a little different here. You said mandated vaccines, some, some are already mandated, measles, smallpox.
Well, mandated, you're right. COVID vaccinations, let's put it like that, mandated COVID vaccinations.
Our vaccinations aren't mandated.
Well, okay, we're, we're getting off into the weeds with this, and Ed's dragged us off over here, but he's right. There are certain things like scarlet fever, and measles, mumps, chickenpox, that we know everybody's going to get, the vaccination does good, it's given to children, it saves lives, but the COVID thing is a political disease. It's a disease, but it's become more of a political disease than it is a real disease, and a lot of politics are played on it, and that's why I'm, as Stan alluded to, I'm against the government forcing everybody to do this, because it's not necessary for everybody to be vaccinated. The truth be known, however, it's highly desirable, I still recommend it.
So you've got COVID.
COVID.
COVID in there.
Yes, sir, please, yeah, thank you.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right. You want to go into the passports, vaccine passports?
I have the same motion, that the board be moved, that we do not support mandated vaccine passports for COVID. You're right, thank you, for COVID.
All right. Let me ask you, if you were flying out of Raleigh-Durham, and they asked you for your card, are you opposed to that?
No, I would carry one, and I would present the, the card. We're, we're back to the Constitution and freedom, and the people's rights, and the government taking control, and that's why I'm against the mandated vaccine passports. There's a whole lot of things that will happen with mandated passports that you can't even anticipate, they could really be bad things. They already have people in the places where they're mandated counterfeiting the passports and selling them, there's all sorts of stuff going on, so there's, there's not a good way to really make them work.
Well, I've, I've not seen a passport yet, I don't know what it looks like, I don't know what it looks like. Okay. You made a motion?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay, we're down to immigration policy discussion. Stan?
Yeah, I'm just getting started with this tonight. The Biden-Harris illegal immigration resettlement plan is going gangbusters, been a huge success. I think they were at about 12, 1.2 million illegal immigrants in, in America so far through the year, I think they're going to hit 2 million before it's all over with. And they are achieving their desired plan, which is to change the demographics of America, and they want to do it in the heartland, and we are flyover country, we are the heartland. Now, they are going to be moving people into our area, and we're not going to know about it unless we have a conduit to ICE. Now, that, in the past, during the Trump administration, in order to move people into an area, you had to have written permission from the local authorities and from the state government. That's, I think that's all been done away with. Right now, we are seeing resettlement through the military, through all kinds of means. ICE is being used for the resettlement, I guess, I'm sure 90% of their better wishes, and it is happening now. What I want to know, and I'm hoping the manager... What I want to know, and I'm hoping the manager, and maybe Charlie, you're still here, are you guys hearing anything from the federal government about this resettlement plan? It's happening. Is there a curiosity on your part? To know what's going on? Because this is gonna be a huge cost to us. Now, it's not gonna be on the balance sheet, it's not gonna be on the financial balance sheet, but it will cost us a tremendous amount of money. When you have to educate people that only years earlier were living in their own country, but because of the huge plan that happened once Biden-Harris took office, they're coming up here now, they're living in America now, they're being resettled into the heartland, and we're educating them. We're providing, providing all kinds of services, healthcare. You're gonna see a country that's gonna be having a hard time financing itself, taking care of itself. I mean, we're, we were, we are a great country, a great nation, a great republic. We're losing that a little bit every day, but we cannot afford to let everybody who lives in a worse place come to our nation and live. That's just not the way it works. There's laws, there's guidelines, and they're not being followed by the executive. We all know that, it's part of the plan. Throw out laws, throw out the Constitution, do not follow it. And, and until that gets determined, I mean, some, some issues have already been settled by the Supreme Court. Some more are gonna be settled by the Supreme Court, and we'll see just how unconstitutional it is if they keep doing it. You'll see impeachments all around. But until that time happens, until you get a wiser people running our country, we need to know at the local level what our cost is, what's happening. So can we set up some kind of a intellectual infrastructure to determine who's coming here, how many, and how, how is that happening? That's news we should all know. We should all be concerned about it, we should all be curious.
Well, let me add that. What I can tell you, at the NACO conference at National Harbor back in July, I sat in on the immigration conference, was a seminar, they sent a guy over who was on Biden's policy committee, and he was a high muckety muck in this. And what he said was this, "We're not gonna tell you when we're sending people into your community. The only thing that we're gonna put up on the website is three months after it's happened, if more than 50,000 immigrants are sent into a state, we will publish a notice and tell you that we sent more than 50,000 immigrants into your state." They are, they are deliberately not telling you what they're doing, and that's what this guy said. And so I think it's important that we take a position on what's, on Stan's motion simply because of, of what we know is happening. Because if you get on there, try to search around and figure out who's going where, you're not gonna, you're not gonna find it, it's all secret. And that's why we need to be opposed to it. Brian, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I got just some information for you. I did reach out to the association, I asked them if they were familiar. I actually took the agenda item and sent it to them and asked them the question and said, Kevin Leonard, the association director, replied to me and said, "I apologize if I answered, I don't have too much information. Share, immigration issues generally speaking are not a county-level issue, so we do not have a lot of policy background. After performing a little research, we are not familiar with a specific immigration policy titled the Biden-Harris Resettlement Act. Perhaps it exists, but we're not know of proposal. I do recall an issue that was discussed in January of 2020 regarding the longstanding U.S. policy and program allowing refugees and asylum seekers to resettle in approved states and communities in the United States. In January 2020, the Trump administration made changes to the policy to allow states and local governments the ability to make decisions to allow or not allow refugees to settle in their, to settle in their communities. Perhaps this is what Commissioner DeSri is recalling." So he said they would be glad to research that further. I do have the contact information from the state of North Carolina. Mr. Dr. Scott Phillips is the North Carolina State Refugee Coordinator. He works for the Department of Division of Social Services under DHHS, and I have a copy of their policy relating to refugee assistance overview. It says, "The United States humanitarian response to the unique needs of refugees was formally addressed in the enactment of the Refugee Act of 1980, Public Law 96-212, which then became effective April 1st of that year." So obviously, there is a program that the federal government put in place back in 1980 that addresses the refugees that come into North Carolina. There's a policy manual that's associated under DHHS. So there are some assistance programs, as I read briefly over them. They can't go any more than five years, they help folks with some financial assistance to get set up. It can't happen for any more than five years, and once you become a citizen, it goes away. So there, there's some information on this, and I'm happy to share that with the board. It can also be found by going to, to, to the state DHHS's website. I mean, you can actually, if you're a refugee, you can go to Beaufort County DSS and ask for help. And there's a policy through the state that would provide resources just to anybody else who would ask for resources from DSS. So there is some information out there, I'd be glad to provide you any additional you might want, but, but you can also find it at those sites.
Well, I'd like for you to bring back, if you could, for the next meeting, the number of people who, under that act, have applied for help by year. I don't want names, just tell us the number of people each year the last four or five years.
I can certainly ask the DSS director if that's available. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to have identifying information, but I'm sure if, if they have those, they would be.
No, we wouldn't want to embarrass illegals.
Well, I mean, you can't provide the information for anybody, whether they're illegal or not illegal.
I'd like to say one thing. That boilerplate that the managers just gave is probably written by a bureaucrat. Certainly not somebody that, you know, cares about our, our state or our nation or even our local communities. Think about this, after five years, they're off unless they become a citizen, or they can become a citizen. Just insinuating that someone who comes to our country illegally, and is, whether or not they're enticed by an administration to come. They come illegally, they set up shop, they live here, and in five years, they think they can become a citizen where they actually should be sent back. That they've broken the law to get here. And they are illegal in that regard because they broke the law. You can't become a citizen if you have broken the law to be here. You can't. It's, in my opinion, it is impossible. It's saying amnesty is good and is right for all. I will tell you now, with the way this is being handled, I will never support amnesty. And I can't imagine any patriot American supporting amnesty, because we're, we'll lose this republic.
Brian?
So just real quick, Commissioner DeSri, I, I understand you're talking about illegal folks. There's a specific categories that's listed in this based on, I assume, this, the Refugee Act of 1980 that talks about specific individuals, refugees, asylees, Cuban Haitian entrants. So you've got to meet, you know, folks who were, who were born in Vietnam after January 1 of '62, or, but before January '76. So there's some pretty specific, you know, special visa immigrants holders from, from Iraq and Afghanistan, human trafficking victims. So there's some specific items in here that, that are, is not, that are listed specifically. So you would have to meet these, so I don't know. I mean, I understand you're saying illegal, but these, I assume these would not be considered illegal because they met these certain criterias, and so.
Okay, Katie, you want to read us into the closed session?
Yes, sir. A needed, a motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 1433181183 to consult with an attorney, employee, or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body. This is in regards to Beaufort County versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corp et al., U.S. District Court of Ohio.
So move. Okay.
I got you.
We're, we're gonna go in the conference room if you would like to stay. Motion to come out of closed session?
At this time, I need a motion to come out of closed session.
Second. Thank you. At this time, I'll ask David if he will make the recommendation.
Vice President Chairman and members of the board. We have just met, and we have decided that we're gonna join the North Carolina MOA, which is the Agreement on the Settlement of the Opioid Situation. And we are joining the other counties who are involved in this. This will mean a number of things for, for Beaufort County, some things like 80% coming to our local government. That's it. Next, next time, I will bring the, the resolution and signature pages for execution.
Okay. Motion to accept David's recommendation? All right, I have a motion, now we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the recommendation and the motion, raise your right hand. Our meeting is now adjourned.